Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the Inquiry into the Response to Major Flooding Across New South Wales in 2022. Welcome to the first hearing of the Select Committee on the Response to Major Flooding Across New South Wales in 2022. This inquiry is examining a number of matters relating to the preparation, coordination, and response to the North Coast and Western Sydney floods by the government. I note that this committee was established by the upper house of the New South Wales Parliament and is separate to the New South Wales Government's Inquiry into the floods. Before we commence, I wish to acknowledge the Dayangbo people of the Bundjalong nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past, present, and emerging, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to land and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. Today, we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including local members, community groups, and cane growers. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. And in accordance with broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to witnesses say outside of the evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media and to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness, according to the Procedural Fairness Resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take that question, quote, "on notice." Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of the audibility of today's hearing, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphones. Finally, could anyone please turn off their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? Now I'd like to welcome our first witnesses. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Councillor Michael Lyon, Mayor of Byron Shire. Take the affirmation that I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Councillor Cadwalladr.
Sharon Cadwalladr, Mayor of Ballina Shire. I swear the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
John Truman, Director of Civil Services, Ballina Shire Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given to me by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Tamara Smith, MP, Member for Ballina.
I think that, in fact, because you've already sworn it. That's fine. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, under the provisions of the committee, there is the provision for a short opening statement, if you wish, followed by questions, and we intend to be quite flexible on the way that questions are distributed. So councillor Lyon, or councillor Cadwalladr, or Ms. Smith, would any of you like to make an opening statement?
Yeah, I'll make a short statement.
Can you also move the microphone closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
How's that? So, in the Byron Shire, we covered the whole range of impacts. We had three different types. We had flash flooding in that second event, we had riverine flooding in both events. We also had quite significant landslips, landslides across the hinterland that are continuing. We had something like 2,200 properties that were directly in the flooding areas, 1,600 of those which had water inside the property. And there's about 192 properties that were isolated in the hinterland when roads were closed and cut off by landslips and the like. Look, I think for me, I just want to make the point that if you fail the plan, then the plan is to fail. And I think that's what we saw in a number of areas as a result of this devastation. But it's important that we look back at the past to learn lessons, not to blame, but to make sure that we plan better for the future. The main areas I want to cover just briefly are housing. And for me, resilience means having a really functioning housing market. And our inability to deal with the existing crisis that existed in housing that we've been in pains to point out. We've put planning proposals forward on things like tiny homes, caps on short-term letting. We've been attempting this for several years, and we haven't been able to get those through. And what that meant was that the exacerbation caused by the floods and that existing crisis left us really exposed, and it's made things so much harder in the aftermath of the floods. In the community response, it's clear that we can't have a standing disaster response team for region-wide disasters like this, and that immediate response is always going to be led and driven by the community and staffed by the community. But since we know that, well, let's prepare for that and ensure we have appropriately trained community leaders who can coordinate volunteers and be stood up in emergency situations. And I think we should have these in each quarter of a community so that we can respond in each area of where we can expect impacts. On the government response, it's, look, it's good we have a resilience in New South Wales, and there's been some good political commitments, particularly at the state level, with funding commitments, and that's been really good, that we have felt supported at that level. And particularly with the announcement of Betterment funding, that we can build back better in the future and prepare, I think is really encouraging, that that's the first time we've really seen a substantial commitment to Betterment funding. Just to pull out a couple of points, Department of Communities and Justice, I didn't think it was good enough in terms of the response, the linking in with the SES, the way that we had an evacuation centre informally stood up, but it actually wasn't formally staffed by the DCJ, and they didn't really make the effort to get in there and make sure that that happened in Mullumbimby. And that left residents stranded with nowhere to go, with no supplies at that evacuation centre. The evacuation centre itself was centimetres away from flooding, and we had distressed residents actually returning home to flood-affected properties because it was the better option. Communications, widespread, just not good enough. Telecommunications networks going down and being out for weeks during and post-flood. Inter-agency communication was an issue, so communication was a big thing. Evacuation warnings being too late, not giving people the time to leave. And I think, yeah, particularly in terms of Telstra, I think there's some serious questions there about the way the network's designed and whether the privatization of Telstra went too far. And I'm just interested to know how that could be improved so that we are, again, the catchword, being more resilient for the future. Finally, the Bureau of Meteorology predictions, I think, instead of having one prediction, we could be looking at a range of predictions. Brian Freddie could have seen during that second event that that rain was coming in off the coast, it was predicted by other sites, why wasn't it predicted by the bomb? And I think questions need to be asked there. And I think we're all aware of the problems that people have had getting grants, that the grants have been announced, and the lack of availability and take-up of those, and systems there needing improving. Appreciate the effort you're making with this inquiry, and hopefully we learn those lessons for the future.
Thank you, councillor Lyon. Ms. Cadwalladr, would you like to make a statement?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming to Ballina for this inquiry. And I'd also like to welcome you to Ballina. Thank you. So Ballina suffered significantly in both events, the riverine and the storm event. We had over 700 properties directly impacted, we had 2,500 people in our evacuation centres, we had significant road damage, and we were cut off. We were absolutely cut off. Was this a surprise to us? No, it wasn't, because our flood modeling told us this was going to happen. We just haven't had the mitigation money to spend what was needed in order to make us safer here in our community. So we didn't have our evacuation routes, our culvert work, our floodgate, our floodgate management as well, and mitigation forms, I think, a major part moving forward. When we have 97% of funds being spent on recovery and 3% on mitigation, those numbers just really don't add up. So in 2019, council declared a state of climate emergency in response to councils' prepared and recently adopted climate change policy. So the recommendation would be that the New South Wales Government reinstate climate change predictions and policy in a statement to guide the planning undertaken by coastal councils for floodplain management. That would be a recommendation. Our major issue to start with was communications, totally inadequate. It was, for over a week, we were totally isolated here. We had staff that had to go across the border to Queensland in order to communicate. We had runners going between evacuation centres. And where the infrastructure was built, I presume at Woodburn in a flood-prone area should never have been. So I would say that seriously needs to be looked at. We had food shortages, medical shortages, fuel supplies became critically low, and it just needed addressing. The ADS that came were very helpful, but they came without any vehicles, without any plant and equipment. And of course, drainage was an issue, we needed drains care urgently, so we needed equipment. And there's still lots of drainage to be cleaned as well. The DJC, whilst they're wonderful people, they do a great job, totally under-resourced. And they were absolutely trounced with the magnitude of this event. So they were inadequately resourced. Housing, of course, we had a housing crisis before this event, and a lot of people here, we had 200 homeless people who lost their homes on the riverbanks. And that has to be a priority. We need housing for our people, we need the social housing projects to run parallel with the temporary housing villages that are being set up now for all these displaced people. I can't stress highly enough how important this is. It would appear, you would think that it would be just one of those things, it would be a basic need, and that is what needs to happen. The SES, they do a wonderful job, the volunteers, and we applaud them for what they do, but they are under-resourced. They should have had satellite phones. The state government has the management of SES and RFS, why don't they have the total management and provide the infrastructure for them as well? With local government only getting 3% of all taxes, I really think it's a responsibility of the state government to provide the infrastructure and so that they are adequately prepared in a disaster like we've just seen. As well as the warning systems, it needs to be professionally led as well. Professionally-led management is of critical importance, as we've just found out. And it shines a bright light on what we need to do, what we need to do better than last time. So we are prepared. Of course, mental health, we all know that this is starting to bite into our communities, and it needs to be managed from the ground up, not from the top down, to make it easier for people, so that the locals can help the locals, like we've seen in this recovery. It is helping community, and I think our best cues come from our community within. Insurance is a major issue. People weren't insured, underinsured, it basically, or it was just too expensive to insure. So we have a major gap there. If we can get an extension of the insurance pool down from Northern Australia that's been established into our Northern Rivers community, that would go some way to giving people confidence to start up again. Because at this stage, they don't have that confidence, because they just simply cannot afford insurance or can't get it. We need something to take place there. So our planning instruments also need to be addressed as well. The LEP, it needs flexibility on the standard templates. So how do we manage these zones in floodplain, frontplain areas? They need to be more flexible and adaptable because they're too rigid as we start to plan for the future. So more flexibility with those planning instruments. The federal and New South Wales Government developed, we need you to develop a funding programme directly targeting the development of flood mitigation infrastructure. As I've already mentioned, this is critically important. It's better to mitigate against than try and mop up afterwards. We've seen the results of that. So I guess public warnings and evacuation routes, all of these things are critically important. Equipment and communications, and communications being absolutely critical. And I guess that covers off on the major issues that I'd like addressed. There's certainly a lot of things that need addressing if we are to build back, if we are to support our communities when they need it most, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Smith, would you like to make a statement?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, can.
Yes, I'd also like to acknowledge the Nibbl and Bundjalong people and pay my respects to elders past, present, and emerging, and all Aboriginal people here today, and note the enormous and devastating impact of the Cabistry Island community, which 26 of the 27 homes need to be demolished, as well as the school. Look, I think it's testament to my colleagues that both mayors are absolutely comprehensive because they are listening to the community, and so I'm sure that the committee, thank you so much for coming, is seeing the patterns emerge. I'll simply focus in my opening remarks on two issues. One is to put on record my incredible gratitude to our emergency service personnel, local, and all of those that came from across the state and country, all of the volunteers, local, all of those unsung heroes, members of our community, just too countless to really do justice to today, right across the Northern Rivers region, and including all of the charities and all of those organizations and the resilience groups. And just to say, and then all of the mud army that came from interstate, and on and on. So just in absolute awe of our community and what we've done as we emerged through the recovery of this. However, and I have done, I've put 30 recommendations to the Okane Fuller Inquiry, but for me, the first 72 hours and what people went through is unacceptable by anyone's standards. And so what it's told us, as the mayors have both foreshadowed, is that we simply don't have, and this is no disrespect at all to our emergency service personnel, who risked their own lives while their own homes were flooded, that they need the resourcing and they need, we need to look at, you know, a retained force there because they simply, because of housing and other issues, we simply don't have the volunteer numbers. For example, there were three SES members in Mullumbimby that were available in the first 72 hours. So when you think the entire town and then the landslips in the hills, that's catastrophic, and there were deaths. So to me, the first 72 hours, as well as the evacuation centres, I mean, you had the Mullamarasell, the Ocean Shores Country Club, the Cherry Street Bowling Club, all of those clubs became evacuation centres from the get-go, with huge impacts on them, hundreds of people and their dogs and cats and babies, people who were sick elderly, and they still haven't been compensated for that. So, and then all of the resilience groups were incredible, and Mullumbimby Neighbourhood Centre, but they simply aren't resourced, they don't have the mandate, they don't have the authority, and they don't know that that's what's expected of them. So in line with what Michael was talking about, to identify those community leaders and ensure that they have the training, the support, the resourcing to be stood up immediately. Because the reality is, is that outsiders couldn't get in. They couldn't get in. So it's not, for me, it's not a criticism of DCJ. Once the staff were here, they were unbelievably amazing. So that, we can't, no matter what we look at now in the recovery, the first 72 hours is crucial, including the Westpac helicopter, and that's a whole other thing you should look at. You know, we spoke very strongly against it being moved to Lismore Airport specifically because of flooding, and that's what the paramedics were saying, and of course, it was completely flooded, and they couldn't rescue anyone. So I think they did one rescue, and how demoralizing that was for them. And then just the other thing to flag is that we're now in week 13 or 14. Our community cannot, you can't possibly expect community, people who've lost their homes, who've been flood-impacted, to wait this long to hear what is really on the table in terms of the Reconstruction Corporation. I don't know why anyone has delayed doing a survey of everyone who's registered through Service New South Wales to find out what their needs are. If, because, you know, David Witherden said to me at the launch of the Corporation that all options are on the table, but we know that's not true. We don't have, there's not unlimited funds. So rip the Band-Aid off and tell, you know, for example, at South Golden Beach, we've got people with multimillion-dollar properties, they are not eligible for a land swap. There's no way they're eligible for a land swap or a buyback. So it's probably going to be a very small class of people who are eligible for some of those things, and so let's identify that early. Like, and it should have been done weeks and weeks ago, and I'm very concerned that we're waiting to July 1st for this next entity to be stood up. So, look, I've got, obviously, I've got a lot to say, I've made 30 recommendations to the other inquiry, and very happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks, everyone, for their opening statements. Ms. Smith, would you mind providing a copy of that submission made to our secretary?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lyons, in your opening statement, you make reference to the evacuation centre being set up but not staffed. Can you sort of go through what was the experience? And now, Ms. Smith, you mentioned these first 72 hours. So in fact, what was the impact of not having the, well, not having the evacuation centre properly staffed or maintained? What happened in the community?
Yeah, so what happened was the SES issued an evacuation warning or issued evacuation notice and told people that the evac centre was ready to go at the Ex Services Club in Mullumbimby, when it actually wasn't the case, and the DCJ weren't there. In fact, I think it took a lot of advocacy by our council to get them there, something like 48 hours after the event. It was quite a ways down.
It was a week, it was actually five, it was a week, Michael, it was one week.
In terms of when the evacuation centre?
No, no, before DCJ staff could get in, it was one week.
So, sorry, Ms. Smith, it was a week before?
Yes.
State government staff were in the evacuation centre?
They were unable to get into Mullumbimby, yes.
The airport was closed.
Yeah.
Sorry, Ms. Smith. Sorry, yeah, okay, because there was access to Mullumbimby after a couple of days, but sure, I don't know where the DCJ staff were. My understanding was on the night, or on the morning, they were on the highway, but made the call not to go in. I think there was an offer of a police boat or an escort of some sort, but they declined that. So I don't know the full details, I wasn't there, but I do understand that we're in the vicinity but made the call not to come, and it was only after we made extensive advocacy that they actually finally stood that evacuation centre up, well down the line, I don't know the exact time, but they were also seeking to close it really quickly. In terms of the impact, so you had this evacuation notice from the SES telling people to go there, so they rock up there, and they're completely unprepared for the arrival of 300 people and pets and all of that. There was no real supplies in terms of enough blankets or towels or any of that sort of thing. And so the impact of that was that people just left.
So what did people do?
Well, they went back to their flood-affected properties. They felt it was a better option for them, rather than being in that location, it was a better option for them to simply return home. After a while, I mean, once the roads were open, they were able to go over to Ocean Shores Evacuation Centre.
Ms. Cadwalladr, I'll ask one more question, and then I'll hand to my colleagues. You mentioned that, you said that mitigation, that you see that as preparation for the next thing over. Because what we have to do is, we have to make recommendations to the government on what we think are way forward. So, and you highlighted mitigation as one of the recommendations that you wanted to see. Can you explore that for us, please?
Yes, absolutely. Well, most councils, I believe, have plans to mitigate floods, but they don't have the resources to do it. Because of their budgets, it takes, it's usually very costly. And I might just ask the director, our civil services director, to just expand on that, if you would, Mr. Truman.
Sorry, Mr. Truman, can you give your full title with your name, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, I'm John Douglas Truman, I'm the Director of Civil Services of Ballina Shire Council. And also, I was in that role, I'm also the Local Emergency Management Officer as well. So I had responsibilities for our council's coordination of the flood event as well as infrastructure planning matters. Yeah, I think, just to councillor Cadwalladr's question.
Can you speak into the mic, sir? I'm sorry.
Sorry, is that better? I can hear that now. Yeah. Yeah, so in response to councillor Cadwalladr's question, typically, our experience is that our investment in assets, infrastructure assets, is typically around renewal. It's very difficult for a council to do more than in terms of upgrade infrastructure. So our floodplain management plans do have a range of mitigation measures which would have been essential to assist us in this latest event. The mayor mentioned the isolation of Ballina as an example. I mean, we were three or four days completely isolated to the north and to the south and to the west. So evacuation routes out of Ballina are essential, and also for the resupply. That's why the evacuation centres struggled for external staff, because people physically couldn't come into the town. Evacuation centre, we've got evacuation routes planned, but the construction of that is multiple millions of dollars, as you'd expect, and there's no current funding source for that sort of infrastructure.
Mr. Truman, has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just one quick question to all of you. We, obviously, we've heard from you now just of the good work of the SES and the ATF, but talking to some people yesterday, we've sort of got a mixed review of resilience in New South Wales and their engagement, their involvement in this process. And in fact, some of them actually said they were more of a hindrance to community-led recovery than they were a help. So I just wanted to get your views of resilience in New South Wales' role in this process, and whether they were, in fact, a hindrance or you feel otherwise.
I'm happy to start. Look, I think that, very well-meaning, Gary McKinnon, when he was appointed as the Regional Recovery Coordinator, but, you know, it's an entity that didn't have a budget, it's an entity that was not up to the task, and that's not a criticism of any member of the resilience team. We saw, there were lots of problems, and then we saw the appointment of Mal Lanyon as the Regional Recovery Coordinator, and he has been outstanding. And the police, my, to Bobsworth, despite my political party, I can say that the police have been absolutely brilliant in the leadership roles that they've had. And I would go further and suggest that the, yeah, the resilience, the model that was there wasn't fit for purpose, and I also have my concerns about the Reconstruction Corporation, whether it's any different. But certainly from Mal Lanyon down, the recovery centres, my experience of touring them regularly is they've been outstanding, and the staff there have been outstanding. And then everything sort of above Mal, I have no comment on.
Any other comments from them?
Yes, I would just say that it could have been because of the newness of the role, and I would agree with Tamara Smith, that when Mal Lanyon took over the role, it certainly took the agency to a new level, and things really started to fall into place, and it was absolutely first-class. The communication I had and whatever requests were coming through me, they were activated forthwith. I can't fault that. But I guess it's unclear of what their role is. I think it's communication again. I think a lot of things we're talking about today come back to communications and being clear about what the role is. I think that's part of... I think that's part of, part of what could be done better. So I don't know whether Mr. Truman would like to add to that or not.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, I think, Jeff, from my perspective, their support in this, helping us establish recovery centres has been excellent. Um, and, um, the issue they face, of course, is as a new agency, my observation is, um, getting cross-government cooperation still across the multitude of agencies that need to support, um, recovery centres. And also think there's a, um, uh, an issue around the fact that they are encouraging, and to their credit, uh, encouraging community-led, um, responses. But in, in, but by doing so, um, in fact, it creates this level of confusion, because some people now are unclear whether it's the councils leading the recovery or resilience New South Wales. Now, both obviously have a considered role, um, but in terms of actually making decisions, there's, from time to time, in my experience, there's been, yeah, lack of certainty around who's going to be making the right decisions, or, or who's got the decision-making. Um, and, and I think it's, yeah, as, as it's moved along, I appreciate that they've been trying to give autonomy to the council, which is appreciated. But, but if the funding decisions are coming from someone else, well, ultimately, that's better that they be making, making the broader decision. So, um, yeah, so, so I think that's where we're sat in that, that, um, uh, confusion. I do applaud their, um, they've, uh, there's a grant that's been issued to us, uh, and to all of the regions councils to appoint community recovery officers, and I think that will be a significant investment for the future. There's, and, and the programme that they've established to coordinate amongst those offices in terms of, um, managing, uh, the learnings out of this event, and how that might be planned in the, is, is, is an excellent programme. So I would note that to the committee.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Catwaller, just one quick question before I pass to my, my colleague, Kate Truman. You mentioned that things improved with the appointment of Mal Lanyan. What steps did he take, or what, what? I guess what approach did he take that improved things immediately? What happened?
For me, it was the direct communication, and the requests that I made were acted upon instantly. It wasn't something that was presented through the committee, and then to come back with a response. I think it was the process for me, uh, and the immediate responses.
Thank you. Ms. Truman?
So, so, Mr. Truman?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I need to interrupt. Can I just add one key decision that I found from Mr. Lanyan?
Yeah.
Was the creation of the operations centre. Um, so we had the SES managing their call centre and tasking and response uh, during the, the response phase. But as we entered recovery phase, um, there's so many community requests coming to so many different points of call. Um, and that became confusing around allocation of resources, prioritising them, and getting people to know whether they were hurt or not. Uh, Mr. Lanyan, with his team, established a, a recovery operations centre, which was multi-agency. So all the requests could be centralised in one point, um, so the councils of the community could all go to that point. And then they were, the work was tasked out to various agencies from there. Now, that central coordination, that took a little bit to, to set up, because it hadn't been done before. Um, and there was issues around how people could contact via services New South Wales. Um, I, I'd make the suggestion to you that that, that model i- is an excellent way of bringing multi-agency response, uh, in, in that response phase. And so learning how that was done on the run for future events, so it's ready, because it did take some time to, to establish in the first instance, which is unnecessary now that we know how to do it. And, and that was certainly, and I think that refers to Ms. Smith's comments around police leadership. That, that was where their, their work was, is in the, in the response phase.
Thank you. Ms. Truman?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to just change course a little bit, uh, in terms of the line of questioning. Um, and this is specifically around the levels of unmet mental health, um, services, or unmet demand for mental health services in your area. Um, we've heard a lot from so many witnesses already, or so many people we've spoken to, just in the short twenty-four hours we've been here, uh, about how much of an issue this is. And I'm not too sure of who to direct my question to, but trying to get a sense of the scale of unmet demand, and how much is being provided by particularly, um, Health New South Wales, um, in the area. I might go to you first, Tana.
Yes. Look, what I, um, what I'm being told by psychologists, local psychologists, is that all of the grants, um, are, they're, they're, they're going, they're, they're a failure in the sense that when you work through it, there's no, um, nothing in there for admin. It's just clinical hours. And we already have a huge backlog, a huge waiting list for psychs. And so what it comes down to is it's about eighty dollars an hour for a clinic, for a clinician. And your average psychologist's chart gets a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So in terms of just the system that's been, the, the grants that have been set up, it's, we're, we're hearing a lot of criticism of that.
Can you explain what the grants are that you're referring to? When you're saying eighty dollars, just talk, talk us through...
Sorry, sorry. I don't have the, I don't have the name in front of me, but the, the, the one, I think there, there's been, um, some initial mental health, so separate to what's gone to Headspace and, um, and, uh, the Red Cross, is, uh, practitioners can apply for programmes, um, around resilience and, and counselling. Um, and what they're saying to me is that when you drill down into those grants, so there hasn't been many in terms of mental health. So when you drill, drill down into them, there's nothing, you, you cannot use the money for administrative purposes. It ends up being only for clinic, clinician hours. And that the way, basically, the model is utterly flawed, that it, it, um, it won't, basically, psychs won't take it up. They won't be able to get the practitioners to do the face-to-face. And so we'll, we'll end up with, um, probably more telehealth, which we know doesn't work particularly in regional rural areas. Um, and then possibly, uh, I guess, what they're saying is probationary psychs doing that work. Um, so, yeah, so that's just one aspect. The other is what they're saying, what really needs to happen over, is over, um, two to three years, you know, starting with outreach, extensive outreach. You can't just, people aren't just going to go and sit in a room straight off the bat. Outreach for a period of time, group, group, um, opportunities, and then one-on-ones, because the predictions of PTSD are really, really high, uh, in the community.
And just one further question, and maybe to the, uh, to mayors. Is there any recommend, are there any recommendations from council in the mental health space then, in terms of your communities? Um, services that aren't being provided that you think are necessary?
Absolutely. Uh, we don't have a Headspace here in Ballina, and there wouldn't be too many people that haven't either been directly or indirectly impacted by this event. It does affect everybody, whether it's somebody at school that's had a friend impacted, or, or who it is. Uh, I'm not saying this was directly, um, part of this, but we had a youth suicide just last week here in Ballina Shire, and it was brought to my attention, we don't even have a Headspace facility in our Shire. The closest is Lismore. I would think that would be, that would be fundamental at a time like this, that we would actually get that service provided for us. And I also think that, uh, we need to have, as I said, ground-up support for mental health. Not everybody's going to go and pick up a phone to ring Lifeline or approach the Red Cross. Uh, they might, might be people knocking on doors, inviting them to a yoga class in a hall, local community hall, where they can connect with people. Just that social connection can be the start of recovery. Or it might be a knitting class, or something like that, that might take place. I'd like to think that there was some funding available for door knockers to go out there and then meet with professionals in a group situation. I just think that's another way of reaching out at a time like this.
Can I, can I just add to that? Um, I have a friend who works at the, uh, hospital in Byron, uh, and she's saying they're chronically understaffed there. I mean, we don't have mental health services, uh, provided in our region either. I think they come down from Tweed to service our, to our area. Um, but she's saying it's chronically understaffed. And this is where it comes back again to the housing issue. Um, it's the same thing with rebuilding. You're trying to talk about where you're going to put tradies and people like this. Let me go through this rebuilding phase. Um, when you have such a housing crisis, it's the same thing with, uh, council, with our planning staff, uh, or our, our traffic staff. Across the board, it's almost impossible to get staff, because there's nowhere for them to live. Um, and that's the case in mental health as well, in that mental health unit, um, in, in the Byron Hospital. They've had to close the older persons unit, uh, and merge two units together. Uh, they're massively understaffed. They advertise, but they're not getting people applying. Um, it's been a combination of factors. Housing's the critical one. The mandates as well hasn't helped in that sector. Um, so it's, it's chronically underfunded, is the message I'm getting.
What's concerning to me is that the Regional Recovery Committee, um, has a range of subcommittees, and the Subcommittee for Health and Wellbeing has only just been stood up. Um, and that group is the one that's responsible for the mental health strategy. And so, so to date, um, there's, but there's no mental health strategy from the government, um, under that, that, those committee arrangements. Um, my biggest concern around that is that compared to some of the other spaces, like animal and agriculture, the environment, uh, infrastructure, where there's more obvious lead agencies, for example, Transport for New South Wales and the infrastructure side. Um, with, with mental health and other aspects, there's so many players, so many non-government organisations, um, and, and the like, and so many elements of health and other aspects. So, so of, of all of the subcommittees that needed, in my view, the broadest level of, um, connection and communication, so to gather them and strategise and prioritise their resources, that's the one that's the least behind, which doesn't make sense to me. So that, that's concerning, and I think what we're seeing because of that is there's a, there's a heap of work being done. A lot of mobile outreach and other programming's being done, but it's not being coordinated, because there's not a strategy. And, and under the current arrangements, the recovery committee's meant to stand up, and the Subcommittee's only just done it. I think that's unfortunately disappointing.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Chair?
Uh, thank you very much, and, um, thank you for your ongoing work. It's going to be a long haul. Um, I've got two questions. Uh, I think maybe to you, Mr. Truman, is the first one, and to you, councillor Catwaller. Um, the, you talked about having a mitigation plan, but not having the resources to do it. Are you able to quantify how much money you'd need to spend to do the mitigation, to fulfil your mitigation plan?
Uh, it's a big book, I'll be frank. Um, yeah, for example, we've got Fishery Creek Bridge here, which is just adjacent to the, to the, to the club. Um, there's an estimated twenty-five million dollar expenditure there to provide dual lanes, so that we can, um, have access out of Ballina Island to the south in that direction. So that, that's just one project alone. Um, we've got overland flood study work done on the Ballina Island, um, and we're talking about ten million dollars' worth of work just for the higher priority drainage infrastructure. So, I mean, we're talking, yeah, a hundred million more. Uh, so it is, it is substantial investment. Um, the, the, I guess the point we're trying to raise, though, is there's this huge amount of infrastructure spend that's going to come through the, through this response phase. Um, and, and the shift to focus towards, um, mitigation funding is, is essential. Um, the other thing that's been concerning is, and even though the number's so big, and sorry to be vague in terms of that response, um, because we've just got the details of that across a whole range of assets. Um, the thing is, what concerns the council, and it came forward at the council meeting last week. Great to have the planning, but the community lose confidence when they know that the implementation that follows will be fairly non-existent. So, so we, we need to link, and a lot of the floodplain planning we do is, is funded by, with government support. Um, but then there's no connection next to the, to the infrastructure planning, uh, infrastructure delivery that should follow.
And so do you think, um, with the, the new commission that's coming forward, that as a key recommendation needs, they sort of need to knit all of these grants, programmes together in the rebuild? Is that, is that the big opportunity here?
Look, I, I'm, I'm on the advisory group that's helping the infrastructure office within, within the corporation. And our focus to date of the work has been understanding the scale of the recovery response, uh, in terms of rebuild. Uh, and there's a procurement necessary to do that in a coordinated way, because at the moment, there's no existing, um, uh, well, sorry, no, there's not the capability within the region, uh, resource-wise, to build what's going to be needed to be built over the next three or four years. Um, so the focus has been more around the coordination of, um, the, the contracts and the procurement, and the resourcing, and the prioritisation of how that event's going to be done. But that is all response money. There none, there's a little bit of betterment money, and, and councillor Lyon touched on that, and that's, that's welcome. Um, the couple of the packages that have been announced so far are going to be competitive, which, which is going to be unfortunately difficult. Um, yeah, so I...
So what, they're just going to make you all put in different grants, and you'll see who comes out at the end, rather than being able to get together and make a sort of a priority list?
Well, yeah.
Is that possible, do you think?
Well, we're still waiting on the detail of that. Um, but there's one, for example, there's the, the three twelve million that the min, the roads minister announced not so long ago, um, and that is, that is a betterment package. Um, and up to sixty percent of that's been allocated to local government roads, and forty percent to, um, up, potentially up to forty percent to state roads. Um, but again, we're understanding that the stage one on lease will, will be competitive. And, and, look, that's not unreasonable in the sense that, um, uh, you know, we want to make sure that, that, that the money is allocated to the highest priority projects. Um, but it does mean it will slow the process down, and so we're, we're suggesting it might need to be twofold. So there might be some lower, lower-hanging fruit identified quickly and, and readily. Um, and then, um, a, a programme designed to assess the, the higher priority projects after that. Um, but I think, yeah, that the whole nature of a competitive grant process is going to make things a lot slower and, and potentially, uh, determine where those funds go.
Sorry, I'll just do one more. It's, it's actually quite different. It's actually, the question I want to ask is that we've heard, um, and you would be very familiar with this, the incredible community effort that's gone into just filling the gaps, being there when there's no government agency, working with agencies when they're there. Um, yesterday, we were down at Wardell Core, just seeing some of the work that they're doing there. How, um, how can government better support that community-led work outside of the structures of council? And based on what you've seen, there's just been such incredible work done. Just wondering how we can make that easier. They seem to, everyone kind of is good. It's three months in, though, now. People are tired. The money is running out. People need to return to their lives. They need to, you know, fix up their own homes. I'm interested in your perspectives about how government can better facilitate that community support outside of, you know, local government as well.
Well, I, I guess I'd, the first thing I'd say is that there have been, there has been an effort from resilience New South Wales prior to the floods to, to do this, in terms of funding resilient Byron. I think resilient Lismore are funded as well through the government, um, to sort of begin this process of, of, of planning for the future, and being resilient and adaptive as communities. So I guess as a starting point, I'd look at that and see how well that's gone, uh, or not, um, as a starting point. Uh, but I, I think it's clear through the comments earlier about how we can, certainly for disasters, plan inside the community and making sure you've got those leaders that can step up. Um, I would definitely accelerate that effort, but I think obviously, seeing how it's gone in terms of what programmes have already begun, uh, and how well that went, and how well those groups went during, um, the recent events is probably a starting point.
I don't think the grants model works at all for this. You know, we, we're talking about, like, if you think after Cyclone Tracy, every single suburb, um, in the northern, you know, that were particularly near Darwin, they meet monthly, and it's all about cyclone preparedness. So, you know, we're going to need a radical, like, each village, considering how cut-off everybody gets, um, you know, that village model, but then it can't just be, you know, throw out a few grants and people have, you know, to me, there, there needs to be, it needs to be, the state government needs to recognise that, that those leaders, and resource and empower and train them, um, and it shouldn't be left to grants, is my view.
Thank you. And, um, just mindful of time, but my colleague, Captain Kizak, would like to ask the last question.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to just ask about the health of the Richmond River. Um, because we're three months, past three months now since the flood. And obviously, the water that went through Lismore went through all the river towns, and was its most contaminated and full of debris by the time it got to Ballina. Um, and there's a lot of industry, um, recreation depends on that river, very important. So I wondered if you could comment on the health of the river, beaches, our waterways generally, three months after the flood event? And if there's any plan to clean it up?
Yes, we are getting seriously impacted here, our tourism industry, because everybody would have seen the river today as you walked by it. It's in a serious way, with lots of debris still washing down. And of course, uh, the sewerage is still being pumped out of Lismore. Everything ends up in Ballina. So our, because of their sewerage plant failing during the events. And I believe it will take six years for that plant to be rebuilt. But improvements are being made with the quality of the sewerage being pumped into the river system, is my understanding. But we still cannot tell our communities and our visitors it's safe to swim in our, in our waterways. So it is impacting us. It, uh, our water quality is, is in a terrible situation. So it is affecting us in more ways than one. Mr. Truman might like to comment further.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Ms. Kizak, I just might add that previously in events, uh, beach clean-up and debris clean-up hasn't been claimable for us under the National Disaster Relief Arrangements. Um, thankfully, this time, and to the credit of EPA, have been actually coordinating that work, so we haven't been doing it. Um, and that's, that's been helped us enormously. Um, so, so the actual debris clean-up is... So, so the actual debris clean-up is something that is, as in my experience from this event, been significantly better than previously. And, and I think that the, the natural disaster arrangements don't satisfactorily accommodate the point that the mayor, that the mayor's making in respect to the impacts of tourism and others, because it's not direct damage to infrastructure, none of that work's covered, even though it's response and recovery work. So, in general terms, there's a real gap in those funding arrangements around the restoration of riverbank erosion, which obviously also makes a significant impact onto the water quality. And again, it falls in between jurisdictions, and the council tends to invest in rock and other reventment works to protect road assets, but because the river's not ours, we're not doing other works, and, yeah, certainly the soil and sediment issues associated with erosion are outside of the current arrangements, and I think that needs to be reviewed.
We need a whole inquiry into the Richmond River. The, it's, the derating, you know, this is, this is legacy, it's going on and on and on, and we're still not yet, I mean, we haven't even talked about the drains and the floodplain. But, yeah, it's in dire need, and that's a, that's a separate conversation.
And just, if you don't mind, because we will, I know that we are going to receive evidence on this, some people will be saying that we need to dredge the mouth of the river, and I wondered if you had any comment on that?
Certainly, the council has long advocated for the, the dredging of the river in terms of, particularly from an economic point of view, in terms of access and safety. We need to consider, in this flood event, our experience was that the flood event, the height that we predicted from our, our modelling in the nights, merely after the rain, was a flood impact probably 600 or 700 millimetres higher than what actually came through, and the main reason we think that happened was because of river scouring. So, there's no doubt that, that the dredging of the river would assist in releasing the water faster and keeping the water lower. I caution, though, that that needs to be considered against, our other flood risk, of course, is from the ocean surge flooding, and the dredging then could then allow more water back in on, on the corresponding phase. So, so there's a balance there, but certainly the, the council and the community here have long advocated for dredging for the purposes of, of helping flood mitigation.
There needs to be a lot, I mean, the climate, we need to be looking at, you know, supercharged weather events and climate modelling to be able to look at any of that, because we could see unintended consequences of the result of dredging. So, it just needs to be part of a much bigger analysis of the river and, and the impacts of, of the river's poor health, I think.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't think anyone took any, any questions unnoticed, but do you have a commitment to?
Yes. I do call it out, Mr. Chair, I think Councillor Kevallad was reading from the submission, but I think that was a submission made to the government, not to our committee, and I wondered, I wanted to suggest that.
Could we extend the same, just, could you in fact give a copy of your submission to our inquiry?
Could we just send it to that flood ad?
Yep.
Does that go to everyone, or does that go to the secretary?
Just to the secretary, and then it'll be distributed to us.
Yep.
And also the presentation we had at Byron Council this morning, if a copy of that could be tabled as part of our inquiry, that would be beneficial.
No problem.
Okay, so there are three things then, so Councillor Smith, Councillor Kevallad, and the presentation inquiry.
Councillor now.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you for your time.
Cheers.
I will take a short two-minute break. Could all witnesses, starting from my left, please state their name and position, and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Good afternoon, my name is Rebecca Woods, I am the Chief Executive Officer of the Bogal Local Aboriginal Land Council. I'm also the CFO for the Bangjulang Aboriginal Corporation, PBC, RN TBC, which are the native title holders.
Thank you. Ms. Douglas?
My name is Arabella Douglas, and I am representing two organisations this morning. One is Curry Country Social Change Aboriginal Corporation, which is a non-for-profit, and Curry Country Group. So, we're also traditional owners, I'm a Minewell woman from the Bangjulang Nation, but my land is between Tweed and the Brunswick River, so I'm in the very corner. And I'm also giving my apologies to Chris Binge from Jarlai Local Aboriginal Lands Council, I understand you've made arrangements to speak to him at some other point.
Thank you. Ms. Woods, there's an opportunity to make a short statement, if you wish, if you, if you wish, it could be several minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, you haven't taken.
We didn't do the affirmation.
Sorry. Sorry, I have to swear, you guys.
That's okay.
Would you like me to do the affirmation now?
Yes, please, thank you.
I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now, if you wish to make a short opening statement, you may do so. Ms. Woods?
Could I ask Arabella to do the opening statement?
Sure.
Great. Ms. Douglas?
Thank you, I might start, actually, on behalf of Rebecca and I first, we'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners, we are traditional owners of this land, I am a Bangjulang woman, as I indicated, it's with great pleasure that we're here and talking about Aboriginal communities in the Bangjulang Nation, and a lot of the evidence that we'll be giving today is a coordinated effort on behalf of the First Nations people affected by the floods in the northern rivers. So, as I speak more broadly about the Bangjulang Nation, I want you to be conscious that it is inclusive of Richmond Valley Council, Byron Local Council, Ballina Local Council, Lismore Local Council, and Tweed Local Council, and elements of Kiogal in terms of systems and infrastructure impact. So, we are both Aboriginal women, and we have, since the flood, Curry Country Social Change, which is a non-for-profit, and a think tank in terms of doing some work in disaster and recovery, have been supporting and coordinating efforts with Bogal Local Aboriginal Lands Council, the native title holders, and in particular Cabbage Tree and Jarlai Local Aboriginal Lands Council. So, I should also say, for the purpose of this inquiry, I used to be the Director of Statewide Services for Aboriginal Housing Office 10 years ago, so I've led floods in the area, and I understand the way that government operates, and I'm still a Housing Appeals Committee member for Justice New South Wales, and I also sit on Crown Board, so I don't come here inexperienced in what's actually occurring in the environment, but for the purpose of these hearings today, Curry Country has assisted in making sure that the Indigenous communities that were heavily affected, including my own, I'm from Finglehead, so the communities impacted there heavily were Finglehead and Chindra, which is an area near the Tweed River. We have, since the floods, decided to come as a group together to talk in all of the, in all of the spaces that have been made available to us, about both ensuring that housing and homelessness is dealt with as a matter of urgency, impact on Aboriginal communities' cultural imperatives is considered and thought about, and to bring ourselves up to speed as to how we're in this space in a river area, and Aboriginal sciences has not yet been integrated into data mapping in the flooding area and flooding zones. So, Curry Country Social Change is a non-for-profit, as I've indicated, and we are assisting the communities in galvanising that thinking and that attention on behalf of the region, while people are also concerned with housing, homelessness, displacement. So, in terms of Bogal, and I'll get Rebecca to speak about Bogal and their impacts on Karakai, but I should start first with my own, which is in the Tweed region. So, we were heavily impacted by floods, we didn't have great emergency response locally on the ground, that happened for a period of time, community were out saving and assisting and helping, we are a very big fishing community, so a lot of people own boats, and they were out doing what you would ordinarily see, rescue or support services undertaking in the Fingle and Chindra and Tweed area. That was diabolical and difficult and stressful for a number of days, but my own observation, having been experienced in an agency that removed towns in 2010 and 2011, I did not see any coordinated effort from government on the ground at all for the first seven days. Then the federal government decided to turn up, and it was, as a marketing opportunity, why there were people still assisting each other. We went then into a mode of getting elderly people out of all of the demountable homes and caravan parks that are kind of exist in the Chindra area, or a very old population, and so people were, including my husband and other people, I thought my quotations made it, but they were evacuated, really just doing the best that we could on the limited resources that we had. There was not a police presence, there was not a emergency presence, people were just doing the best that they could. At about day seven, I started to get particularly worried, because the things that I would ordinarily see, for example, although internet was out, that you would ordinarily see the state asking for people who come from areas of government, who have dealt with emergency, responding, responding to make themselves available to assist. I have witnessed that inside government, none of that happened. I was expecting, the northern rivers is an amazing place, there are amazingly talented government, senior ex-government and government people all through the region. We were discussing the fact that at no point, even though people were on the ground, were people being asked to assist and help coordinate, and we could see coordination was not occurring. That drew terror in me, and I was very concerned, I have biological family that are connected to Cabbage Tree, so I was hearing that people were evacuated under stress, as I said, I sit as a Housing Appeals Committee member, so I'm very conscious of housing and homelessness as an issue as well. I was understanding what was occurring in terms of urgent relocations, I had handled that myself, and there was absolutely no government coordination occurring on the ground for the first 12 days in any systematic way that you would imagine. I also, Curry Country also owns a native food farm and barren farm, so we are part of the food community in the region. We were already responding both in food, supplies, water, we were still evacuating, cleaning mud, helping people relocate, find accommodation, I, in using every effort that we could, thinking that you're going to sustain this for some period of time, and somebody else will show up. Their defence within the area, they were not obviously instructed to engage at that point, people were making observations, they were around. I'm very familiar with how the federal government needs to set a trigger in order that the state may operate and use some of, of its other resources, it did not happen, and that was apparent. It was disarming, and quite frightening to think that we were waiting for a marketing opportunity from the federal government before there were letters of exchange to support between both the state and the federal government. It was really scary with a lot of elderly people, a lot of young people, and no ability to be able to communicate and get between areas because of the systems failure in the region. We're in a region that's looking at removing its railway at a time when that is the biggest corridor to support systems infrastructure. We had roads collapse all through the region, people were cut off, we had, in the food space, we were assisting with helicoptering in food to people who couldn't get any food and water. That is not okay, we're not in Bolivia, that is not okay, we're not a third world country, although we have third world elements and thinking going on in the northern rivers. And so, that startled me, concerned me, as a non-for-profit, we decided to come down and assist the communities that were already in dire need, both in Cabbage Tree and in Karakai. I mentioned to the mayor of Ballina before she mentioned, because I don't want it to seem like I'm trying to insult her, but she's yet to visit Cabbage Tree, the mayor that was giving evidence. So, what you have before you is a layer of communication to the inquiry about some interest, but there's a lack of integrated voice in the community as a whole. I'm not trying to embarrass the mayor, I asked her simply, why hasn't she still been there? Even if she's fragile or precious or whatever is going on in her mind, that is not okay, we're 12 weeks in.
So, what's?
This is with Karakai and Cabbage Tree. They haven't had visits from their mayors in their local area. We had 200 people removed from Cabbage Tree urgently, and the mayor of the local town hasn't yet been there to see them. Prince William has been on the Zoom with them. I say this to put in your mind, not to startle you, but to make you understand there are tandem thinking going on and responses going on. So, we got behind Cris Binge, she's a very impressive young, you know, vibrant young leader of the community, and Rebecca, who's outstanding, to make sure their voices weren't just part of the dinner, to make sure that housing for Aboriginal people was on the top of the agenda, to make sure that their relocation was important. So, but it shouldn't require that, it should be easy for a state government, and I am very conscious of the state government then pulling away from the federal government, making sure their personality seemed distinctly different, and I appreciate the Premier came up, they certainly, Cabinet, state Cabinet certainly got their act together in terms of responding, but only through pressure, not through planning. Now, but throwing it over to Rebecca, I just want to say a couple of things about the framing of this. I heard a question from the inquiry about, well, how much does it cost to do all these mitigation planning? I am aware that all of the local councils are putting mitigation plans to the state more than two years ago. In 2020, they also submitted mitigation plans, all of the local councils. The volume and the number around that was about $150 million, the scope in what that people were asking for was about $3 million. Janelle Safran is on the record inside Parliament requesting that on behalf of all the local councils. I'm not pro-her or against her, but it's infuriating to know that all of the local councils, for their deficiencies about particular local engagement, had wanted funding for mitigation plans, and that hadn't occurred.
Ms. Douglas, how about we hear from Ms. Woods, and then we'll ask you, we'll ask you a few questions. Ms. Woods?
What I'd like to lead off with is that I am an Aboriginal woman, I'm a Kwandamooka woman from Stradbroke Island. In my present position, I'm working in Karakai for the Bogal Local Aboriginal Land Council. I want to acknowledge upfront that assistance that we probably needed from the representatives at a local, state, and federal level never came to Karakai to assist us. We ended up getting the results that we did through the sheer determination and assistance of people like Arabella Douglas and her non-for-profit Curry Country. They were able to sort of map out a clear plan for us and try and assist us basically make our own outcomes for ourselves. It's not really her job, I mean, you know, we're in an LGA, we're part of a state, and we're part of a, you know, a federal nation. So, I just wanted to say from the upfront that the, basically the response that we got in Karakai just wasn't adequate. So, we were lucky to meet Arabella, and through her experience and contacts, she was able to sort of help us map out a plan to move forward.
Thank you, and if you don't mind, we'll start the questioning from my colleague, Penny Shetland.
Thank you, and my first question is, the 200 people from Cabbage Tree, where are they, and what is the plan? What support are you getting to develop the plan?
Well, I've got to say, Chris was doing a great job moving and evacuating people, and I really do hope that you get a chance to talk to him about the experience of evacuation, which is quite phenomenal in and of itself. People then moved into effectively what would be state, state response housing, so apartments, hotels, et cetera. We then had, had to push up and get direct relationships with various ministers responsible for the roles, including Steph Cook, and speak to her office, and use Cabinet members personally. And that's obviously not what you would ordinarily do, but there was a lack of knowing who was running what, and who needed to be aware of what for the first phase. So, I, we decided on a plan, we used all of our Sydney contacts, our relationships with various ministers, were able to get the Premier onto the island, we had a plan about what we were going to ask for and funding, and we took to task an opportunity to get the Governor General and Prince William, and we used all of the powers that we possibly had to make sure that Aboriginal housing was prioritised, and made sure that it was accounted for.
And are you saying the follow-through that you?
We are, because then we worked with Minjiru as well, who I knew were an advisor for the state, we talked about pods, I have great relationships from different mining sectors in, in Western Australia, and of course, we've got Aboriginal community projects all the way through Queensland, and what's great being Aboriginal is that you have a variety of networks that you can work on. So, we had at our availability other camps that were being closed down, that we could use stock, we were looking at that as an option. We were looking at that as an option. So we were problem solving and pulling up to the government's solutions and briefing with our solutions because there was no one thinking through that. I offered that to my own local council, Tweed local council. I offered it to other groups that I knew were also struggling with getting assets and supply, which is a big issue at the moment. So it certainly wasn't as though we were just only focused on Aboriginal people. We just knew that Prime Minister himself came and said, it's up to the community to do. Once we heard that, we thought, fine, we'll do it. We started planning and working out what our communities needed and started using all of our networks nationally and globally to work out plans for pods. So we were able to get the pods. Mal then came on board and I agree, he seems efficient, but he's still beholden to the minister, you know, I mean, obviously there's a national party, the local party. There's a relationship and attention there that has to be worked through about who wants to be doing what. But for the community, it was to make sure that we were both housed, prioritised, moved across. They had a temporary accommodation. We were looking at Lake Amesworth at the beginning. And that they're now building and they're moving people into. So our issue for the state, and the state is very aware of this, and I have briefed ministers on this last week in the Curroquai and the opposition minister, people are very aware at a state level that the accommodation made available for cabbage tree and other people temporarily is exactly that. It is temporary accommodation. It is only suitable, and they've been advised of this, for potentially 12 or 18 months. The problem with that, of course, is we're running up to an election at the beginning of next year and you need to see commitment for rebuild. There are over 4,000 homes in the area that drastically need labour, people on the ground to be able to do the work. The insurance matters are not yet resolved. And you have some temporary stock which people will be very glad to be in, but it cannot house them and educate them. We've had, like the gentleman who spoke before, Jarley's had three adult suicide attempts. There is tremendous mental stress, social stress upon people. Education has been disrupted. I think Rebecca, you were saying your internet and electricity and stuff was like, was it two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago, restored to us.
Can I, it's sort of, so much to ask.
Sorry, ma'am.
But I've got one more question because I'm clearly that my colleagues, I'm sure have lots of questions. And it's really, it's sort of two sides of the same coin. And it really is, what didn't we know and what didn't you think the community knew that needs to be included in the future if this was to happen again?
I think what they didn't know is the mapping for ancient knowledge, they did bombs bomb. Problem is bomb didn't work. There are two parts to this. And again, I come from the experience I've had in flood recovery myself. There are two parts. One is that currently we have a volunteer fire force that works around the environment. If a fire happened, people run and get on their stuff and they go help. There is not that in the, in the structure of communities at the moment. There's not a flood response community-led group that goes put on overalls. That's one. So I imagine that Mary O'Kane's inquiry will probably recommend something like that. That needs to be funded. It can't be voluntary. It needs to be professionalised. It needs to be Aboriginal-led in a lot of ways, particularly in the river systems. There needs to be more information and data. And what I'm saying is not new. Again, I refer to your, I think it's called the CENTI report, which is your overarching framework between government, federal government and state government. Those strategies, one of them specifically says that you need to have more data fed into prediction, including Aboriginal sciences and information. That was created by the government in 2019. That's a strategy. The question is, why aren't you asking those people who had a responsibility to roll out that strategy from 2019 to 20, 2019 to 2023? Why is it that you haven't focused on those strategies? We want to and we're going to put in a proposal to map this area with Aboriginal knowledge systems and science and archaeological evidence as well. Ballina is buona, which means belly swell. If Chris was here who would tell you this story, we've all come from three brothers here. He's from one, I'm an ancestor from another, I'm a Minyungu woman. Ballina means belly swell. So you might be thinking, well, what does that mean? It means this is not actually unusual. I know you think it's a crisis and it's all about climate, particularly it is in one way, in a shorthand view of it, but there have been large river swells like this in this area. You need to, and your good people have done it in the report, you need to get better data to feed prediction in a way that actually makes sense. More information is better information. So we're very keen as the Bundjalang nation to do that mapping. We're putting in a proposal to do the mapping. Even if the government doesn't want to do it, we're quite confident that the community, our local councils, will be open to listening to those predictions. And that's going to help with some decisions like, should you rebuild areas or not? So that was already suggested by government. You said, let's go out and ask Aboriginal and First Nations people what they know, and no one did it. We've decided as the groups in here, the 13 clans, that we're going to do it anyway. Because we're going to wait for governments to decide to do it. We have to do it for our own planning and so that we do have our assistance here again. So, I mean, it's not just that you need dredging. That's not the answer. The answer is we need to think about how we might operate communities differently, how we might pivot them differently. We're working on plans to keep temporary housing stock in the region so that we can pivot in a crisis. We now understand what that's going to look like. Yep. Another question?
Yep, no, no.
Sorry, I'm very passionate about it.
Miss Douglas?
We've had a long 12 weeks.
No, no. Ms Douglas, I'm mindful that my colleagues, my colleagues want to ask questions, so.
I really want to thank you for your passionate presentation. I live at Lennox Head and you captured the fear and the panic. I think particularly when we were told everyone in the Northern Rivers needs to evacuate. It scared the hell out of me. Do these people have any idea what's going on? And I was actually in the Richmond room when Cabo came up. I wondered just to really, the island needs an evacuation plan, clearly, and they need a place to go. So I just wondered if you wouldn't mind giving evidence to that a bit, that it's not the first time they've had to be evacuated. And I was very surprised in terms of the importance of keeping community together, the elders being at the Ramada and others being sprinkled all over the place. I just, if you could, in terms of evacuation of a whole community like that, if you could just speak to that, the importance of keeping people...
I think you should ask Chris that as well, but I'll give you my version, but of course, ask him again as well. But in terms of the community, they have elders buried on the island, so A, it's got a bottleneck and a very dangerous way in and out of the island. That's going to be addressed. I know the EPA report for cabbage has come back. But they're also, Jarley Aboriginal Lands Council are the largest landowner in Ballina, LGA. So they have other options of land. They're unfortunately surrounded by cane fields, which means drainage and matters like that also affect how water is retained in the area. But the evacuation plan really needs to be about where they see themselves in the future and whether or not they keep the space as a community space, not necessarily housing all of the people back there again and look at aged housing for other elders and think about their other land holdings. They're not looking at insisting on being right just to maintain something. They're actually more interested in looking at how they can stabilise their community and that may look a bit different in the rebuild.
So is that conversation underway at the moment?
It is, it is. I mean, obviously Chris has got the EPA reports back, I think, which is what they were waiting for. Insurance, as you would also have as well, insurance for local Aboriginal lands councils is an unresolved issue. There's great impact there, whether it's insurable or not. There's, I understand there's large-scale class action litigation being talked about, potentially pushing the government to underwrite insurance like we've seen in other areas of the world. But those are the issues that will inform how they rebuild and what they do going back there. But at the moment, it's extremely dangerous for the types of water that was coming down because, you know, Chris ended up commandeering a helicopter. He ended up putting people on his shoulder, waist-high. There is a really super, super narrow bridge. And that's why I asked the mayor, had she been out there? It's not to, I want her to be shocked into doing something because she sees, wow, I'm in a black space. But it's to see that people are having to live in conditions and narrow conditions, like a narrow bridge or safety conditions, that need everyone to be concerned about it. And so, yeah.
So in terms of, just focusing back on the evacuation though, the idea of keeping the community together and also the school.
Yeah. The school out there and there's also a medical centre at there. I know that they also want to rebuild. At the moment, the plan is where they've set up at Wardell, the school's got to make a temporary type of school there and start servicing the kids as people come back. Also start to do some health support, mental health support, et cetera. But if that remains a school, which would be great, people go in for the day and they take their kids there and have a lot of community space, it may lessen the danger of having people resigning there permanently. And they may choose a different sort of mix. But that's a matter for the community and the members to decide. And I know that they're thinking through all of those things. But at the moment, most of the members and the decision makers, which is why also I'm here, are in crisis. It's their homes that have been impacted. So decision fatigue at the moment is a real thing for everybody here. All the people that are actually affected by housing are also leading non-for-profits or small organisations and are decision makers in school and how we do these other things. They're strapped in their mind because they're worried about where they're going to live at the moment. They're still going hotel to hotel or just about to relocate into something. So it's very challenging.
And can I just ask you, so many questions, but how many, do you have an estimate on how many First Nations people were impacted by the flood?
Yeah, we do actually. We've got, the numbers from Curroquai, you're at about 90. That's right, about 92. Maybe 100 from Curroquai. We've got about 300 from cabbage tree. We've got about 150 from Lismore to Tweed. They're the people who I would say are displaced and impacted. And then you have people that sit outside that rim who were impacted either by infrastructure, so system impact. So they can't get to work or we had, I think there were 26 cars that went underwater in cabbage tree, for example. That impacted people's ability to get to work. And those car, if you haven't noticed, the car market is extreme. Second-hand car market and first car purchasing. So there's a desperate need for just cars to help people get back to work and work isn't just local. I haven't even seen anyone talking about that, you know, like, so, and that's throughout Lismore and throughout Tweed. So up near the hills, Blambal and areas like that, a lot of cars were taken off. People were, or they had a very cheap car, blood damage and couldn't repair it and there's no repairing mechanism or it's too expensive to repair.
Or it weren't insured.
Or it wasn't insured, yeah. So that's a major issue as well. And I wouldn't just say for Indigenous people, I would say for people in the region, that would be a major issue.
Ms Douglas, other questions from colleagues over here? Sue Higginson?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask about the river and the river health and what your communities and the people you're speaking to and the health of the river and what you think. Do you want to come in on that, Sis, first?
One of the things that I do actually want to say is that as the CFO of Bandjalan, the native title holders, one of the things that happens is obviously the damage from the floods has quite possibly exposed areas of great cultural significance. So from a native title holder perspective, there really hasn't been this assessment of the extent of the damage to, you know, our cultural landscape. And there hasn't been any, I mean, I'm heading up the organisation and no one's even had a conversation with me about how the floods have impacted our landscape. You know, so there's been no initial conversation about how the floods impacted. There's been no assessment or suggestion of assessment how it's affected our cultural landscape. And there's been no plan, obviously, because, you know, you need steps one and two. You get to step three, which is, you know, like mapping out a plan, moving forward about how you might, you know, protect and preserve what was already there or what may have already been exposed. So, I mean, the rivers are under strain anyway. You know, I don't know if you know much about Aboriginal culture, but, you know, our forefathers before us, you know, in a time of war and managed the land without such events. And the reason it is and was that way is because we knew it well, we knew its intrinsic value and we have a tremendous amount of respect for our country. We don't own it, we belong to it. And I think that the wider community has a lot to learn about these values that form our culture and the ways that we see land and the way that we manage our land.
Can I just ask a follow-up on that, if it's not inappropriate? And if it is, just, from where you sit now, would you say that the damage is significant culturally?
Yeah, I would say, I just want to add about that because we, you know, obviously our substance is fresh, you know, freshwater and saltwater, predominantly saltwater people. At the moment, the saltwater systems are just abysmal in terms of bilberry or pippies, in terms of what's available to eat at the moment. It's very difficult. Like, there's great impact in the river systems. I haven't seen large-scale work around that, about how, what the recovery is for that. So oysters and oyster systems have been badly affected, pippies and piffy systems have been badly affected. You can tolerate lots of fresh water into your river. What you can't tolerate is all the chemicals that run up from the farms and the fresh river into the system. But there has been no large-scale work. No one's engaged with Aboriginal people about, you're talking about cultural value. If you imagine that this happens in Egypt, the first thing the government would do there would be a cultural assessment and heritage impact statement that talks about its great value, its world value. We're in a world-class area here and we've had no one come and do large-scale world heritage mapping on the impact. We have caves in our area with Aboriginal art, we have songlines, we have great art in all through this area that maybe non-Indigenous people still don't know about. And that's okay, but it still needs preserving. It still needs protecting and nobody's doing that work. There's only four native title determinations in the state of New South Wales, so the list is not long. They would be the most critically impacted and nobody's come to speak to them.
Ms Douglas, Ms Douglas, a question from Scott Barrett.
You touched on a little bit before about the lack of cars now meaning it's difficult to get to work. Looking forward, you know, industry's taken a massive hit across the area. What has that meant for job opportunities for these Indigenous communities? And how do we, I guess, minimise that impact going forward, you know, not just now, but six, 12, two years?
Well, I implore you all to stop the destruction of the railway as number one. It's an urgent piece of infrastructure, a corridor for those supplying people that needs to remain in the area. Because the supply chain for cars is a longer part of the conversation and you actually don't control the global markets. But you do control the corridors of rail. And please, let it remain. There's an idea at the moment about a bike track and for some reason they're having to pull up rails at the same time. You don't need to do that. That would alleviate and help the communities grow and get some traction on moving at the moment.
That's the access to.
That's access to and from work. Because that, I mean, that corridor is still great and it's valid. But the other thing, of course, as Rebecca has suggested, the floods could have revealed great cultural impact across those corridors. No one's even come to say there's a large piece of infrastructure going on, huge flood. Let's reassess it for cultural and heritage value. And we'd be asking for that. That needs to happen. That's the sort of mindfulness that needs to happen when you can sit Aboriginal and heritage in those sorts of zones. I think in terms of an economic plan, Jarley presented to cabinet last week a labour plan about getting some labour support in the area for both their urgent build and build in the area. It's gone up and been circulated to every minister as well as opposition. And it basically looks like a mobile workforce of 1,000 or 1,500 people. You're asking me to hurry, are you?
No, no, I was going to ask you if you could supply a copy of that submission to you.
And basically, I'll just tell you the exciting bits so you understand it. Minduru have offered to do workers' camps in the area. And in order to attract labour and keep people in the area so that everyone can get their houses fixed, you need to meet the gap between the FIFO market and the common market. So we're asking government to consider an incentive so that we can actually attract the people to remain here for a period of time and have a nimble workforce can actually rebuild the 4,000 homes in two years. So we spoke to Minister for Treasury, Minister for Planning, every minister we took a meeting with, we briefed the opposition. It's a great plan and it's a great labour plan and it serves the area. I'm very happy to share that with you. To be driven by Jarley Local Aboriginal Lands Council, as they're heavily impacted. They have a couple of, what would you call them, project manage and build kind of teams underneath them. And obviously the priority is to build local and regional jobs at the same time. So there is a plan and we've thought of a plan as well. So we're not just asking for housing. We're asking for security of housing and plan to deliver. And we've had to work intimately, directly with government to get some traction on it. And we've had to work intimately, directly with government to get some traction on it. And that shouldn't ordinarily be the way a region would ordinarily operate.
Through the chair, can I say something?
Ms Woods?
Um, I want to talk about the experiences through the floods for Karakai in particular. Karakai's a small town, twenty kilometres out of Lismore. It's on the neck of the Richmond and the Wilsons River, so it deals with large volumes of water. Um, our little town was basically left stranded for five days. Like, it was just local people. I think our little SES crew was probably two volunteers. Um, so it was just local people banding together, but we saw a lot of that during the floods. Um, there's three Aboriginal organisations in town, I head up two of them. Um, I've just taken the third one under my wing because we're seen as the one that has most capacity. Um, Karachi is a independent housing cooperative in Karakai, but, um, they just don't have the capacity to deal with the after-effects of the flood. And when Bobal Land Council is in a small building in the middle of the mission, they call it Box Ridge. Um, Box Ridge wasn't directly impacted by the floods, but it sort of became an island. So access into town to get supplies and things like that were impacted. Um, eventually the SES, like, came, um, you know, we get it, you know, lots of people in need all at one time. Um, but one of the things that started to happen is people started saying, oh, you know, Bobal wasn't impacted, you know, there were a flood, but we're a small town. Um, there's three Aboriginal organisations and, um, I'm basically the most capable. So my workload has blown up like you wouldn't believe because there are lots of people in need, particularly the people that were in the Karachi houses. Um, they weren't insured. Uh, you know, there's like, Arabella mentioned the number, you know, just over ninety. We're coming into winter. Um, with Currie Country's assistance, we were able to secure some pods. But what it really points to is the wider national crisis around housing. You know, they've never done Aboriginal housing well. Um, we kind of get the cookie cutter model and, you know, that's what you're getting and, you know, there's no consultation about whether it's fit for purpose. Um, you know, our demographics, you know, like in those sort of teen years, like they are growing exponentially. And we need to be able to plan for these things adequately. And we've been doing it for years and years and we haven't been doing it very well. And I just feel as though this flood crisis has really shone a spotlight on it. Um, one of the things that, you know, I get it, I said it to Arabella, it's a scale thing. Lismore's a big regional centre. Jali, you know, the island got wiped out. But, um, you know, in Aboriginal, in the three Aboriginal organisations itself, like ninety people have been impacted, you know, ninety percent of Karakai was impacted. We've got houses where people are living twenty in a three-bedroom house. And, you know, we had an early meeting, Mal Langdon came, you know, representatives from Nia came, the National Indigenous Australian Agency, we had representatives from Aboriginal Affairs, and they were basically saying the same thing to us, you know, here are the hotlines. But what it doesn't account for is the sliding scale and ability, particularly for Aboriginal people. I mean, you know, you've got everything from illiterate to highly educated. And what we found is, is that, you know, the more educated people sort of had that additional stress. And I, I like that term that Arabella used, you know, decision fatigue. Like, I'm just so tired because my workload has blown up exponentially and there's really been no attention to increasing the resources to me to assist. Um, you know, people, we're coming into winter, people are still living in tents on their footpaths, you know, DCJ are offering them houses. But what they don't understand about Aboriginal people is that they are solidly connected to country and their family are their support network to, to suggest that they, you know, maybe move up to a space on the Gold Coast so they're housed. They, they don't understand that it's a holistic thing, like we function as a group. So if you take one piece out of the group, it sort of falls down. So in terms of, um, everybody being impacted, you know, the one-size-fits-all model really doesn't speak to the solution for Aboriginal people. And, um, you know, we were fortunate that we ended, uh, working with Arabella and Currie Country because they really got our perspective. And, you know, they were just like, we're here, how can we help them? And that's really been the greatest assistance that we've had during the whole thing.
Ms Woods, can I, can I end up one more question? You know, the, the example you provided of twenty people living in a three-bedroom house, what is that like? What is the circumstances? What is the situation?
It's, so these are just people in Karakai whose houses weren't impacted and they literally just took these people into their homes. So we've got two and three families living in houses that are probably meant for people, you know, six, six people. Um, yeah, it's tragic.
That was done so that people could stay together and I guess this is, in terms of planning for an evacuation, there are just different considerations, it seems to me, for First Nations people, that they need to be kept together. Um, that, I'm just wondering if we need planning a separate principles ground, what to do in, in an emergency? Because it's, they're not complicated criteria to me, they're just really simple, keep everyone together.
That, that meeting that Mal Langdon and he brought his staff here with him and Nia were there and that sort of thing, you know, he, you know, I said to them, we needed a dedicated resource.
Yes.
Because what often happens is the government agency's profile, um, you know, they don't really have a profile with Aboriginal people. You know, it's kind of a, they only intersect where, you know, there's an absolute need. So in circumstances of crisis, for example, they're not, they don't have this profile that Aboriginal people are readily aware of or know how to use. And we were basically, I said to Mal Langdon, you know, it's not good enough just to sit there and say, keep ringing the, you know, help lines. We needed a dedicated resource to assist those people, otherwise they fall through the cracks. And that is exactly what has happened.
Ms Woods, could I please ask, when you say dedicated resource, and I'm sorry, we're so over time, but what exactly are you talking about? Are you very specific? Is it, is it a person? Is it like how much money, how many people? What is the dedicated resource that, that you're requesting?
I think it's all of those things.
But it's also a dedicated area. What did, what we had to really lobby for and to, to improve the stress upon Ballina as a town and to not feed into a tension of racism and then people inside the town. Chris took the approach, and I think was absolutely right, to want to keep the community as one block, together in one location. That helps in a myriad of ways, both with community and cultural support. But it also helps with not creating tension in the town. We have large families, I meant to mention for Chris as well, he's got some families who have eight children, ten children. So that's very difficult to do in a couple of bedroom places or in a couple of pods even. So we're now working with them to plan a pod, you know, a sort of a sequence of pods that works for larger families. You have to conceptualise a community family, not a nuclear family, to actually get some traction and some support.
Because in our culture, we have kinship responsibilities. Um, I am aware that we are over time, but I just wanted to finish by saying one thing. Um, Bobal, as a local Aboriginal land council, owns land in freehold and as part of, you know, putting together the, our, our own response, we identified land where short-term and long-term housing could go. Like, we did that ourselves. We said to government, we own land, you know, it doesn't have the infrastructure in the ground, but it could be a medium-long-term solution, not just for Aboriginal people that have been impacted. Like, we own a lot of land around town. So like, you know, I'm surprised people didn't come to us and say, you know, all that land that you own, could we build some medium-to-long-term housing on there to help relieve the stress of the people that have been impacted? I'm, not a single person has come to speak to me.
Can I just say?
This is the last question.
No, I'm even here that I saw community services trying to manage twelve families, not one community.
Thank you.
Take that as a comment.
No, no, that was very, thank you, thank you, Ms Douglas. Thank you, Ms Woods. And please do not forget the submission, sending a copy to us.
I'm gonna, we have a full submission, but as I indicated in the preliminary document, we're making a comprehensive submission to Mary O'Kane's inquiry. And I would, uh, really ask you and invite you to read it thoroughly because we have more about the science piece and how Indigenous peoples may be of greater benefit to the region than potentially suspected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this the one? Yes. Could all witnesses, starting from my left, Mr Richardson, please state your name and position and swear either an oath or affirmation?
My name is Nick Richardson. I'm out of the management committee at Byron Bay FM Community Radio. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Ms Armitage, could you state your name, your full name and your position and state whether you can swear either an affirmation or an oath?
Thank you. My name is Mia Armitage. Mia is a nickname, it's Mauricia Armitage.
So you have to speak close to the microphone, pull the microphone, the big one. The short one.
Hello. My name's Mia Armitage. Mia is a nickname for Mauricia. So it's Mauricia Armitage. I am the secretary on the management committee at Bay FM and I also head up the newsroom at Bay FM Community Radio. And I apologise, getting over a bit of a lurgy voice is not so great today. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now, we, we have a provision for a short statement, if you wish, two to three minutes or a little longer, depending.
We'd like to take that, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr Richardson.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to begin by acknowledging the people of the Vanjulang Nation, the traditional custodians of the ground on which we now meet, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. So we are Bay FM, Byron Bay Community Radio from just up the road, and we're here to talk about communication. Uh, we made a submission because we wanted to explain about how we were able to help during the recent floods and ongoing, and suggest ways we might be able to do more. So I'd like to hand to Mia Armitage, who, as she said, heads our community newsroom, who has her personal perspective.
Thank you. Thanks, Nick. Four days after floods and landslides devastated much of the northern rivers, including my new hometown of Lismore, I was finally able to buy petrol for my car, drive through newly reopened roads, pass a fleet of fire and rescue trucks and the Mada Army convoy en route to Lismore to arrive at the heart of my work as a regional journalist, Bay FM Community Radio Station in Byron Bay. I'll never forget how grateful our community leaders were the second I could invite them to join me live on air, whether it was police confirming rumours of a buried body in Upper Wilsons Creek, or a baby born in the stranded community of Wanganui, the Byron Mayor promising to ask the army for help rebuilding the bridge to Upper Main Arm, or the Ballina Mayor letting us know how the community of First Nations people further south on Cabbage Tree Island were doing. Local voices embraced the local community radio. We announced the need for a volunteer security guard at the Byron Bay Community Centre in order to open an emergency shelter in the morning. By afternoon, that need had been heard and met in the community, thanks to our service. We have community support. We're proud of the role we play as the voice of our community and how we add hyper-local, even personal details to broader information shared by our beloved ABC. But next time we face disaster, we want our community to be better prepared. And as we recover, we want to help our community build back better. We're ready and our mics are on.
So ongoing, we think we can help in three ways. One, at the time of such an event, with officially verified timely information, which is what we were doing, to the extent that we could last time out. Secondly, we can assist with recovery. So we've become a community hub for people and services to help them get together and regenerate and share the things that they need and get things done. That work is still ongoing at the moment. But thirdly, we also think that we can help with mitigation by, uh, helping people prepare and educating people around the things they can do to try and reduce the impacts of events such as this, but also fires, storms, health events, you know, whatever. We recognise that we need to plug into a broader communications network. And there is such a model that we're aware of in another state and that might be a starting point for you, I don't know. And of course, we would need to.
Sorry, sorry, none of us can hear that, sorry.
Victoria, I just didn't want to use that language in the room, but there it is, I've said it. Yes, so the, what, what's the body called there? Uh, Emergency Management, Victoria, has a sort of certification programme with community radio stations. So there is, there is a kind of, and I think, I understand there's something like ten stations are signed up to that, uh, with maybe more to come. But it's dependent on resources, uh, so it's an optional programme at the moment. So I don't really know how it works. The national, our national body will be able to speak to that in greater detail.
Now, Ms Armitage, do you have any experience in the, or was this job simply thrust upon you?
Could you elaborate?
Pardon?
Sorry, could you elaborate? What do you mean? What was the question?
Well, I, I guess I'm sort of trying to say that the role that you and the radio station took upon during this crisis, do you have any experience in that or was it simply just thrust upon you?
A bit of both. The first time it was thrust upon me was during what is called the Black Summer, but for us was, began in spring. And thankfully, we did have another volunteer at the station who had, uh, experience working for the ABC in developing their emergency, uh, what do you call it, emergency broadcasting systems. So yes, I had experience. Yes, it also was thrust upon me.
Ms, Ms Kuzak?
Thank you. Um, look, thanks very much for your submission. I think one thing you're missing is the humour that you managed, um, during that time, which was very welcome to everyone. Uh, I live up in the area. I know that when the internet went out, it was very difficult to get news reports downloaded. In fact, I think the guys were joking that something had downloaded, they didn't know what it was, but they were going to play it. Um, I wondered if, if you have any comments about that and the importance of radio stations in a crisis and actually disaster-proofing them, if I could put it like that, because it is such a critical source of information for community.
So.
Are there technical things we can do for our radio stations?
Yes. So obviously, radio, community radio is a community bond. We're here to, you know, amplify and connect the community. So any means we have to shore that up is better. So in, improve signal, improve reach, improve coverage, improve funding, improve programming, all of those things help to make the bond stronger. So we are a community hub in the way that other community organisations are. So, yeah, I, I think it's great that you do mention the humour because we did try to take a little bit of the stress out of this for people as well because, you know, it's twenty-four seven for most people. I've, I've still got people living with me now, I mean, it's ongoing.
But if you're talking about backing up, um, internet and services.
Yes, exactly, and having potential.
Absolutely essential for us, yes.
Yeah. Um, now, I, I think we asked the ABC as the emergency broadcaster, but I don't think they're giving any evidence. Okay, um, can I ask you about that role of emergency broadcast? Um, is that essentially what you're saying needs to be?
We'd like, yes, we, well, we have played a role in that.
Right.
And, um, as.
Can you describe how that works?
How, how we help with.
Your role in the emergency broadcasting.
Hyper-local is really how you would sum it up. So ABC is our emergency broadcaster. Unfortunately, there are pockets where the reception is terrible and, uh, people there were unable to get ABC. And, uh, we heard later, or at some point during the emergency period, that these people were more or less clinging on to their little old-fashioned battery-operated radios and tuning in to ninety-nine point nine. So we were, you know, really. So we were, you know, really careful to make sure that we were providing that hyperlocal information for those people. So when I say hyperlocal, it's in our submission, but we're talking about names of streets, names of creek crossings.
So my understanding is that the ABC get provided with a script from the SES that then gets read out every hour?
I can't speak at all for what happens at the, at the ABC. Yes. And, but what we do know is that the ABC has had to broadcast and serve a huge geographical area, and that there were times, as this climate catastrophe sort of expanded across such a massive region...
Yes.
There were times where they had to stop sharing information that was relevant to the North Coast specifically, and switch to their newsroom at ABC mid-North Coast. Yeah. And so if you're someone who's panicking, you know, up in our Mullumbimby, Main Arm, you really could be waiting hours before it's going to switch back to you. So that's where Bay FM could step in and fill those sorts of gaps, plug those gaps if you like.
Ms Armitage, in your, and Mr Richardson, you refer to timely information. So how did you determine what information to put live to air? Like, what selection, what process? I guess, how did you distill what you actually put live to air?
Yeah, that, well, it was very much in the moment, thinking on our feet there, but how did we, how did we determine?
May I just help you and ask a question? Before you determined what you were going to prioritise to broadcast, where did you get that information from? Were you fed stuff from the SES? Were you fed stuff from police or other emergency services? Where did you get that information from?
I'm very resourceful, as a, as a trained journalist. I've got some contacts already, so yeah, I was able to get...
And did you watch out for you then?
It was both, both, yeah. Like, I do have some good rapport that I've built up in my time here on the North Coast. So it was a combination. Fortunately, because I don't live in the Byronshire anymore, I've moved to the Lismore local government area. I was one of the few people at the station who still had working telephone, working internet in my home office. So I was getting messages from anyone who was able to get reception. I was speaking with like the mayor of Ballina, and I couldn't get onto the Byron Mayor for a few days, but I was able to get onto the Ballina Mayor for minutes at a time until she would lose her reception. The SES as, as well, I mean, you know, I'm on the email list for all these sorts of organisations, so yeah, I get all their, their press releases.
So you can take from that that Mayor's very connected, and that's a benefit for us, but in terms of being official networks and, you know, proven systems, we're not part of those.
That's what I was getting at. If Mia wasn't connected, what would happen?
We'd be less helpful, is what we'd be.
That's what I'm getting at. So then, establish streams of information from emergency service providers, whether it be police, or SES, or RFS, or whatever. If they were to provide you with that information, you'd then be able to broadcast it in a much more efficient manner.
Of course.
So we need to look at establishing a chain of communication.
Yeah, absolutely. Bang on.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to...
Ms Armitage, so do you feel that you were able to provide, what, what may, I think you wouldn't be giving evidence, you wouldn't be speaking if you didn't think that you provided a worthwhile service? So what made you better at it or more flexible? What made your service more worthwhile to the community?
More worthwhile than any...
Well, I mean, other traditional sources that you would get, which would be other radio stations. What were you able to do that other radio stations weren't able to do?
Again, I'd say it's, it's all about hyperlocal.
Yeah.
So it's, it's knowing the community, knowing, knowing who they are, how to contact them, all the different groups as well, knowing which social media groups are the ones to tap into. You know, a place like Byron has that, still does have that small-town feel and that, that concept of one or two degrees of separation, if you like. So once you've been here a couple of years, or if you've joined a group where people in that group already know most of the key players within the community, it's, it isn't that hard to get in touch with them. So that's sort of, those sorts of contacts are the kinds of contacts that I think people in a centralised metropolitan office just wouldn't have. And in fact, I do have, have had people from outside the region contact me asking for the contacts. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Also, just to answer that, in terms of other competing communication options, unfortunately, the Lismore Community Radio Service was down, I think Paradise and Ballina was down also.
NIMFM.
The, the ABC North Coast, as we've discussed, is sketchy because it's a wide footprint and can only reach not everybody. And of course, mobile down, TV down, internet down, everything else down. So we were, for some people, we were the only option.
And I may add, I also work part-time at the, at another news outlet, that's called Echo Publications. So that's a traditional, it's a weekly print newspaper and an online daily. And my two editors at that paper were both isolated as a result of the floods, both disconnected as a result of a loss of phone and internet. So again, it fell upon me to get all of those essential updates out to the community online through the services that, that I still had, thank God, and through the contacts, you know, that I was able to, to reach so quickly.
Yeah, I'll keep doing that. Yeah. So thank you, thank you for your submission as well, and the services that you provided to the community during these terrible months. What recommendations specifically for, would you like to make to this inquiry for assistance to your radio station and other community radio stations to be able to deal, to be able to alert the community, to be able to continue to communicate to the community as you did? What, what recommendations are you making to ensure that you're able to continue to do that, and to potentially do it better, and, you know, more strongly, and to reach more people during emergencies in the future?
Well, that's really about resilience building, which is kind of like the topic of conversation for everything, really. So we're seeking to ensure that firstly, we continue to exist, because we, like all community radio stations, run on the smell of an oily rag. We haven't been able to update our equipment in the studio for sometimes, so that in itself presents a threat. You know, it's feasible, and of course, we rely on support from the community, and the community is down. So we can't go and ask for money from local businesses and community members. In fact, we were about to launch our biggest fundraiser ever, three days after the floods hit, so immediately we had to suspend that because it was not right for us to go out and ask for money when everyone else was doing it so tough. So the, the means to which we're able to raise funds in the local community is, is a primary issue. So firstly, we need to remain in business, if you like. Secondly, we need to become resilient so that when storms or floods do hit, and it took out a lot of communications infrastructure, that we have redundancy and backup. So we have generators at the transmitter site, we have generators at the, at the station, we have got some means of transmitting and broadcasting remotely, so that if the station itself goes down, we've got some sort of fail-safe option there. So it's, it's those kinds of things, it's preparing for the worst, I guess, really.
So in terms of, in terms of specific contributions that government may be able to make to community, not that we are the government, we're not the House Inquiry that will make recommendations, but for community radio to be able to provide these essential services, you're, to be a little bit more specific, you're saying resilient, but to be a bit more specific, contributions towards renting, where you're, where you, where you broadcast out of. I, I know, I think that you're a volunteer, aren't you? Is that correct, or?
We pretty much all are volunteers, so we all have other jobs, so.
Yes.
The newsroom does receive a little bit of funding from the Community Broadcasting Foundation.
But the station's operations itself are not, not funded from elsewhere, so we just scratch around and raise money as, as best we can. So we would need capital investment to improve the equipment, we would ideally need ongoing support to make sure that we are able to maintain high standards of service, and as part of this, there may even be some kind of service level agreement. That's the thing, I think, that operates in Victoria, where they agree to respond 24/7, but of course, they need resources to be able to do that, because you can't just phone up a volunteer at 3am and say, get in there right now when that house is flooded as well.
And your evidences that because of the impact on the community who normally support you at this time, because so many people are struggling to, to pay the rent to get by, their income's lost, that your kind of existence in the short term is, is under threat, let alone to be able to be this best...
It does, yeah, it's in jeopardy, absolutely, yeah.
And, and it's, it's the third, third time it's happened to us. Began with the fires, and then the pandemic. This region was locked down. A lot of businesses have lost a lot of money and staff. And yeah, now this one.
Any other questions?
Comment that, and I do have a question that tags with it, but we were all using Facebook to communicate, where is the evacuation centre? People could go in, donate, feed people. Then, when the internet went out, it 100% became radio, and it was the ABC, which is a regional radio station. So the flood levels, which they need to read out to everybody every hour, were taking 10 minutes to read, because it was every, do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
We heard him.
So I just wanted to, in terms of your point about hyperlocal, this is the only possible mode of information when in a disaster and information is gone?
Yes, yes. So for, I guess an example would be the lack of, of supplies. If we cast our minds back, when we, we didn't, because the highway was closed for a while, the fuel and the food wasn't getting in right, and a lot of people in our area need to get some of their supplies from the centre of Byron, the Byron Bay CBD, which is where our station is. Once the internet was down, people were really scrambling to find out, well, can I get fuel now? Am I going to be able to hit the road yet? Can I get out? Can I, you know, go and see, help people outside of Byron? That was the sort of information that we could impart, you know, the, the backways, or you can get through to, to Byron, not by Ewing's Dale Road. Ewing's Dale Road is still, is still closed off, but I've just driven through Bangalow Road, and the exit of the highway to Bangalow Road is still open. That sort of information. And if you're in Byron Bay, you know, forget about parking up near Marvel Street, or whatever it is, that, that sort of information is what we're able to get out. So that's the kind of information that people wanted to know around, around where we were, as well as things about schools, you know? Is the school open? Can I get to the school? Mullumbimby State High, I think, stayed open for a bit, but you had to have your gun boots while other schools were closed, and yeah.
Thank you.
Ms Armitage, thank you. That brings us to the end of our afternoon session. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for having us.
Ms Armitage, Ms Richardson, and we'll reconvene at 4.30. Welcome, before we, before we hear from Mr Cummins, welcome to today's, to today's public forum for the Select Committee on the Response to Major Flooding Across New South Wales in 2022. This session is an opportunity to hear directly from people who have been impacted by the floods on the North Coast. The public forum is a relatively new innovation to the New South Wales Parliament, so please bear with us. We have at least 15 registered speakers so far at this stage. So before we commence, I would like to make a few brief comments or procedures for today's forum. Speakers have been asked to register, and for those who are registered or wish to register, there are secretariat staff here. Now, for individual speakers, you will have approximately five minutes to address the committee, and there will be a warning bell to indicate at three and a half minutes, so that will give you an indication to wind up or draw your, your comments to a conclusion. And I also would wish to remind you that what is being said today is being transcribed and will be streamed live to the Parliament's website, and will be included in evidence to this inquiry. And it's also important to note again that while all parliaments are covered by parliamentary privilege, committee hearings and public forums are not indicate, are not intended to be, to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of privilege. In that regard, it is important that participants focus on the issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference, and try to avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. Finally, can I sincerely thank you for those who've come forward to share their, their experiences? It is important that the committee hears individual, personal experiences of those directed, directly affected by the floods. So, and I hope that it will help form and shape and inform and formulate what we hope are important recommendations to the government. Thank you. And Mr Cummins, you have the privilege of being the very first public forum participant.
No one can be better than me, than me yet. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all today, and what I want to put forward is my experience as a farmer. So I'm the manager of 500 acres of macadamias on the floodplains at Wardell. We have 77,000 trees planted across that property, and to date, over the last three years of the project, we've invested around about $12 million into that project. And what I really want to highlight to the group is the lack of drainage management. We understand that on the floodplain, it floods regularly, and we will often have three to four minor floods a year. Quite comfortable with that. What happened in this event in February is that I believe the, the water that was sitting in the drains did not drain away, so it exacerbated the flood impact when the water from up catchment did come. And why, why didn't it drain away? Because the floodgates, which is a one-way valve, which is designed to close during high tides and open during low tides, it's low ground property, it's been farmed for multiple decades, is that they have not been maintained. Mangroves grow up into there, and then they grow around the gate, and the gate only opens 20% of what it should. Now, that's simple physics, and that means it's going to take a lot longer for that water to drain away. In this situation, it meant that we had a lot fuller drains when the floodwater did come. It probably meant that we had, you know, a foot, two feet higher water than we should have, in my opinion. Now, why aren't they maintained? As a farmer, I would happily pay for the cost of it, and we would maintain them, but there is excessive green tape prohibiting this. There is three government departments involved in the point of the floodgate out to the river. There is excessive approvals required between New South Wales Fisheries, Department of Water, Council, as well as Department of Primary Industries, I think Department of Main Roads as well. We're talking about a four-metre strip of the drain that requires four government departments approvals. It's ridiculous. And there is a requirement to complete an environmental impact statement. That is ridiculous. We're talking about a four-metre strip, and this is a potentially a $50,000 environmental study, when it is a $250 solution. It's a drain, an excavator would clean it out, we would have been in a much better position on our property, as well as the local community in that Wardell region as well. I think that this should be highlighted, and it would have been a common issue across the three rivers, the Clarence, the Tweed, and the Richmond. Previously, there's been drainage management unions, they don't exist anymore, and there needs to be a better solution for this. And it is not a case of investment stopping this from happening. Growers, whether it's sugarcane, macadamias, or cattle, invest a lot more money than the cost of these drains, they would happily co-contribute to that. It is the bureaucracy that's prohibiting that, in my opinion. The second point that I want to flag, that I'm sure other people will, is the release of grant funding. Straight after the floods, you're in a wonderful place in your head, in this really happy place, and you're asked to jump in to this excessive bureaucracy. It is incredibly frustrating and damaging to people's mental health. We have applied for the grants months ago, and we are yet to receive any funding as yet. I understand the requirement of public money to handle it professionally, but I think that it is being prohibitive and restrictive and having the opposite effect. I think that consideration should be given to getting more money out sooner, and having much stronger punishment for people that did the wrong thing, and make specific cases and examples of that. So they're the two points I'd like to flag, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr Cummins. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we'd like to call Mr Tony Brown. Thank you, Mr Brown.
Thanks for your time. Just as a bit of background, I'm 55 years old. My occupation is IT consultancy, but... My occupation is IT consultancy, but I also work with farmers and consulting around regenerating their farmlands and that's my real passion. My wife and I moved down here about seven years ago. I've also been part of a lot of community organisations, Fort Triple Sed, board member in Brisbane, board member for Paradise FM. I helped establish Farmers Connect with Joel Orchard, who'll be speaking next. There's a local organisation, which is now national, and I'm a board member on Wardell Core at the moment, which is the recovery hub in Wardell. I'll start with another natural disaster, which is the fires back in twenty nineteen, twenty. I was working an IT job as well as doing biodynamic spraying for farmers and also then at night jumping onto fire trucks and fighting fires, which most of, I guess, the experienced firefighters have said they'd never seen behaviour like that before in fires. At times we had to park those trucks in the shed because we'd been going since August for a lot of the crew members, the volunteers, and they just didn't have, I guess, the legs in them to do it anymore. So one of the things that I think really struck me, both from those fires and then these floods, is the fact that we just need more people power and we need to be more cross-disciplined and agile in what we do. We had the army turn up and that was after eight days from when the water began receding. The army were brilliant in helping us, but they had a very, very narrow agreement. And really, what they were doing was focusing on lifting stuff out of houses and putting it on the footpath. But they didn't have a hammer or pliers or any tools to help us rip the nails out, hammer them in, or do some of the basic repairs to stairs to help people to get in. There wasn't the heavy equipment there to help with a lot of driveways and things like that to do it. So I think one of the things that I think is really important is going forward, we need to be more agile and cross-disciplined. And if we were able to get, I guess, a couple of young, strong-fit army people under the backs of fire trucks, for instance, if they'd done some basic training, that would have made a difference with all of our response to natural disasters. Because this isn't just a response over a number of weeks, this is going to take years to recover. And one of my other points, I think, is that we can't just rely on volunteers from all around the country who came to continue to do that without at least being able to give them some money to help pay their expenses, their rent, their mortgage or whatever. So I think another thing that is really important is that we're actually able to get people that are throwing themselves in for months on end to get some compensation easily for their efforts, because that's what we're going to need going forward. It's not just dollars. I think, as Rob just mentioned, the grant system takes a long time, but it's not just about dollars. We actually also need people to be there, show kindness, to build trust in our communities and have a place for people to come to. So that's part of it for Wardell Core, for us, is that right now we're out of the hall while it gets repaired and we're not likely to go back there now. We're now in a private residence, a quarter of the size, we're paying five hundred and fifty bucks a week in rent. That could be going to the community and we're going to run out of money. So we need those places. The pub's shut down, the sporting re-club is shut down, it's probably good we don't need a place with alcohol, we need a place, not in Ballin, not in Alstom, but in our little community for people to attend. I think the other thing too, that's really, really important out of this, is that we don't, we're bailing out the boat and we're trying to get more effective at bailing out the boat, but from a big picture point of view, we've got to plug these leaks. And I look at this river and I was really surprised when we moved down here, I think it had a grading of minus D. There's a lot of topsoil in there, there's a lot of talk about dredging, but my experience in regenerative agriculture talks about the riparian zones and having the vegetation up there to hold the water and hold the water in the landscape. And I think probably that came through in the First Nations address as well, is we need to actually care for our landscapes and put more effort into that, as well as the big picture thing with climate change. This is about national security, this is a real emergency. It's happened here, but one day this will happen over Sydney. Thank you, sir.
The next witness is Maria Mathis. After Ms. Mathis is Mr. Nick Crouch.
Is it this one?
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Is that, am I speaking into it?
Yes, you are. Loud and clear.
Thank you all for the opportunity to have a say today. I have a few hats on. Firstly, I am a flood-affected person. I had a metre and a half floodwater into my house at Bagatville. Bagatville never gets mentioned in all of the reports everywhere and even the mayor said a month and a half after the event, oh, were you flooded? So it's, some of these areas in the rural community get forgotten for too many weeks after the event. Uninsured due to twenty thousand a year premiums after two thousand and seventeen, living in my camper trailer for almost three months with not really any end in sight. I was prepared for a big flood, a one-in-one-hundred-year flood, like most of the people in my community. So the other hat I wear is I'm president of the Tuckeean Area Landholders Group, which is about ninety-eight percent of farmers and most of them have been through numerous floods in the Tuckeean Swamp over the years. So everyone has planned and designed, they've got mounds built up to the one-in-one-hundred flood level, everyone did what that was supposed to do for a one-in-one-hundred-year flood, but this was beyond that. And I pre-siate the enormity of the scale of the thousands of people that are homeless, the thousands of people that everyone is trying to help. So it's just difficult when you have this huge event that is beyond all expectations in height, in the period of inundation, so the water stayed around for so much longer than any other flood. Where I am, I think the highway helped a bit in holding the water back and then it couldn't get out of the Broadwater into the river from the swamp. So it was substantially ten days before the water had retreated from my property instead of three. So we also, I, we have also found the whole grants process quite difficult to go through. So it's been a surreal experience, like you're not expecting that to have been the outcome and when it was, it's like, you don't know how to move forward, you don't know what all this means, you can't find people to help you. If you've got a mate, you can, I was lucky, I had my electricity, two PowerPoints put on in two weeks, but I know there were people waiting, you know, up until four weeks ago to get their first two PowerPoints. It's just not an easy time and there isn't any mechanism to make these sort of catastrophic situations that deal with large numbers any better. It's a disaster, resilience, New South Wales, sorry, really have not been prepared for such an event as this and I hope they are in the future. And Wardell Core and Broadwater and Woodburn and Corocai hubs are what has held the people in the communities together and provided those places for voices, to share stories and everything, and they need more support. Disaster Relief Australia and Samaritans Purse are fantastic, but like, it's next week that I'm getting someone to help me take the nails out of my house. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Mr. Nick Crouch, please. And after Mr. Crouch is Daniel Ainsworth.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Thank you for taking interest, thank you for coming. I represent about a thousand people who signed up overnight for a lobby group who wanted to sue what is formerly known as the RTA, Transport for New South Wales, because they're concerned that when we built this important infrastructure, that we stuffed it up. There's a lot of consultations that happened that was said to be more ticking a box rather than listening to locals saying that the six-metre highway that is going to be built upon the floodlands between here and sixty kilometres south was going to impact on the flooding. It may have done so, it may not, we don't know. We will only know when we get hydrology reports, which Transport for New South Wales are compiling now, which are not being provided to us. I have a QC who specialises in environmental work who's happy to help us. I have the person who wrote the standard on flood mitigation for Australia trying to help us, but we'd need the data to have a look to independently verify if the road has contributed to the loss of Vanessa over there, whose house is brand new, which is now worth not half of what it was, you know, a little while ago. And that's the problem, there's a thousand people whose houses now are worth half what they used to be. And if it was because of the road, then let's identify that. We don't want to blame the RTA, we certainly don't want to run a class action, but we'd like to get to the detail and have scientists, hydrologists and lawyers independently tell us what actually happened. And you are the key to all that. If you can provide that information, if you can tap the RTA on the shoulder, it will help the thousand people like Vanessa over there, who now are not sure and they are bitter and they are angry and they are flood victims and I'm a flood victim as well. Directly behind us is my shop that went underwater for the first time ever. So maybe some of that water on that sixty kilometre levee wall, that dam wall flowed down the river and hit my shop as well. And if it has, then the shop that I purchased recently is only worth two-thirds of what it used to be. And yet, we all make mistakes, I'm not blaming anyone, we don't want to sue anyone, I cannot reach for that enough, but we would like to know if there was a mistake. So you can help us do that and I really urge you to do that because there's a lot of anger out there and I was really surprised at it as well. And you guys are the key to it. So we're not getting anywhere with Transport for New South Wales yet. And to be fair to them, we've only knocked on their door recently and, you know, they may come forward and assist us and if they do, then that's great. They'll find that we want to collaborate, we want to work with them and we just want the answers. They do a fantastic job, it's critical infrastructure, but if it's wrecking my shop and her house, then we'd like to fix it. But without the hydrology reports, now the hydrology reports are hard to get, the ones that the RTA did, they commissioned five reports. Maybe the first one didn't quite say what they want, there's allegations that the road was running behind time, sorry, well, there's allegations that the road was running behind time. And if we built a bridge instead of a six-metre lump of dirt and the quarries that we made there, then it was going to cost a lot more. So maybe that was a question for what we were doing and maybe that's something we can look at as we progress highways. And that's something which we can help, perhaps help other communities. So if that was a factor, then let's identify that as well. But the starting point for us is where the water would have flowed across from our houses down to Evans Head, the longly established waterways, it hit a six-metre wall that didn't have enough holes in it. And we need you to tell us, is that right or is that wrong? That's it?
Thank you, sir. Daniel Ainsworth. And after Mr. Ainsworth, we'll have Michelle Brown.
Thank you, committee members, for your time, letting me tell my story. I come here today as a resident of Broadwater, who has experienced the floods firsthand and suffered significant damage to my home and to my community at Broadwater. I'd first just like to note that I am an employee of the New South Wales Government and have worked for the Royal Fire Service for more than twenty years with extensive emergency management experience. However, my views today are not linked or endorsed by the Royal Fire Service or the New South Wales Government. As a result of the aftermath, I took two and a half months' leave off to deal with the aftermath and the events to assist my community in the recovery process as best I could. As I left work on the afternoon of the twenty-fifth of February, the latest information from the SES and the bomb was to expect a minor flood peak in Woodburn on Saturday. This usually means no effects for Broadwater. Come Saturday morning, from what had been a wet week, the rain began to clear somewhat and the latest information from the SES was a corocai had peaked and Woodburn would fall below mine at once the high tide passed. No information was released indicating there was any threat to Broadwater at the time. At four thirty PM on Saturday afternoon, the predictions from the SES began to warn of moderate to major flooding from Sunday evening for Lismore and Corocai area. Again, no mention of Broadwater, with Woodburn advised to watch out for possible moderate flooding on the Monday night. That's major flood booking number twelve for the Richmond River. At this time, most people in Broadwater felt there was little danger, as in the past, Woodburn had to reach major levels before Broadwater felt any effects. Come Sunday morning, the rain returned and people began seeing on the news the devastating floods in south-east Queensland and the warning that the weather system affecting Queensland may move south. By Sunday morning, by Sunday afternoon, the messaging being sent out by the SES mentioned possible moderate flooding in Woodburn by Tuesday morning and no mention of Broadwater. Most people in Broadwater went to bed thinking it would be another flood for Lismore, but nothing major. For those that stayed up and read the bomb updates, around ten PM Sunday night, the forecast for Lismore changed to a possible levee breach with a similar flood to twenty seventeen Lismore event, which for Broadwater was largely unaffected. Early Monday morning, I woke to the news that Lismore levee had begun over-topping at a record height and Woodburn may reach the height of nineteen seventy-four levels. I posted this to our local Facebook page to try and warn people to be prepared for a flood in Broadwater. I continued to do this throughout the day whilst preparing my own home for a possible nineteen seventy-four type event. None of the messaging being released mentioned Broadwater, nor was there any sign of worry from Broadwater with the SES. I believe this is because they were being overwhelmed by a record flood in Lismore, with news reports of people being rescued from rooftops in Lismore and downtown Lismore. At this point, I spoke to other members of our local hall committee and we decided we would open our community hall for a space of refuge in case of need. My wife and I decided that we would be staying at our home, as it is two storeys, and we had enough supplies to last a couple of days of isolation. And we sent our kids into Ballin to stay with my mother, as we thought this would be safe. Come Monday afternoon, an evacuation order for the SES had been issued for Woodburn and low-lying areas of Broadwater. The message was confusing and mentioned a height of three point two metres and the Wardell gauge in Broadwater, which doesn't exist. In two thousand and seventeen, when the height reached these effects, these heights, the flood height effect was minimal in Broadwater at three point two metres. Most homes are built to one-in-one-hundred-year levels and those not built to one-in-one-hundred-year levels didn't see any danger at this point. A text message was also received, but gave little information, which most people ignored as a result. People continued to prepare their homes, filling sandbags, you know, piles of sand that was left by the local council and been dropped off next to the SES shed, remembering in the past that it takes two to three days for a peak from Lismore to reach Broadwater. Most people went to bed Monday night expecting to wake up and do a little bit more to prepare for the floodwaters from Lismore. By ten PM Monday night, the water had broken the banks south and north of town and began filling the paddocks, which although was earlier than normal, was as expected. As the water continued to rise faster, my wife and I took turns in checking the height from our second story of Randar and by midnight, it had entered our garage. We felt that we had the light items lifted upstairs and the heavy items above what we thought was the safe level downstairs. Once again, no flood message had come from the bomb or SES mentioning Broadwater, so we guessed the predicted heights from the Woodburn gauge. Come Tuesday morning, the water in Broadwater was one metre above the floorboards of most single-storyed homes and the sound of private boats were going up and down the street of the residents could be heard. They were rescuing people from their rooftops in their second story of Randars, just like what had occurred in Lismore twenty-four hours earlier.
Mr. Ainsworth, if you would like, because the time has expired, we could incorporate the rest of your statement enhancer if you wish. How much did you have left?
I've got one page left. Is that okay?
Go for it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No, go.
In Lismore, twenty-four hours earlier, catching many by surprise with no warning. In the south of town, it was reported a wave went through about three AM, catching many in the Caribbean Park asleep in their beds. It should be noted that the boats were all private citizens and I personally did not see one SES boat that morning. The SES unit, the local SES unit at the time, had eight members and received no support from other units. If it wasn't for the act of a local resident who used an excavator to get the boat out from under the shed before the waters rose... from under the shed before the waters rose, their boat would have fared the same fate as the SES trucks that got left in the sheds in Woodburn to become inundated with water. Sometime before twelve PM on Tuesday, my wife and I, still at home, decided with the water still rising, now only twenty centimetres from our second story, we've, it was time to get out. We flagged down a passing boat and made the decision. Sorry, wait a second. And made the decision to take our dock and leave the two cuts behind. Sorry. This was one of the hardest decisions we made and didn't. Thank you. This is one of the hardest decisions we had to make and we hoped that stage it wouldn't go any higher. It didn't and went about a foot into our second story. For two days, we took shelter at a friend's place in Evans Head, not knowing how we fared. We had little to know of internet and had lost contact with one of her and the kids in Melona. We eventually got a phone call from my son and found out they were okay. For residents of Broadwater who stayed in town, they camped it out on the main hill in town, whether they had taken their cars and caravans in the days prior to the event. Around a hundred and fifty people stayed on the hill, isolated from power and water and sewer for many days. The locals banded together and fed themselves, unable to get any assistance from the outside. Eventually, they cast down a passing helicopter and got a food supply drop at this stage. They were unable to get any assistance from the outside and able to check in. If it wasn't for the residents with private boats, I believe we would have seen many more people would not make it out. Once the water began to fall on our community, they rallied together with no support from outside agencies. There was three foot of sand covering the main roadway north of town and mud everywhere else. We made contact with local contractors and arranged the roads to be cleared, mud to be scraped away and gevers to be piled up on an essential location in town, all done by local coordinators without help from local state or federal assistance. By the fifth of March, we had set up our own community hub at the hall and had a coordinator in place to start logging jobs with assistance. By sheer luck, we were able to have a platoon from the army airdropped into town, who were quickly adopted and we put them to work. I opened up the bowling club and gave them a place to stay and they set up a coordination centre in our hall. As we were already setting up jobs ourselves, the army were able to quickly integrate with our operation and work in place. Until the roads opened up, the army was our only help with the end contact with the outside world. During all this, my wife and I managed to find a place to rent in Evans Head with the local real estate, working behind the scenes with the Department of Housing for either cover costs or reimburse anyone who found temporary accommodation. At this time, local leaders from the local Richmond also got together to form a recovery committee of our own in the absence of any leadership anywhere else. The committee was made up of local school principals, local business representatives, local club representatives and the local government employee and was chaired by the local police sergeant. We discussed ways to move forward. With the combat agency overwhelmed and not present anywhere in the towns, the move to recovery by government was non-existent, with the agency responsible for recovery having little to no staff on the ground. The staff that were around had been working non-stop since the event and were visibly under stress. Department of Community Justice had two staff members covering Broadwater, Woodburn and Coricay and Evans Head. Normally, this would be okay. However, now they had to deal with five separate evacuation centres and a population of nearly seven thousand all looking for places to shelter. Resilience New South Wales didn't arrive on the ground for three weeks after the event and only provided one staff member to cover the entire Richmond Valley and Kowabunga Shires. The staff member did their best, but they really had no support and became overwhelmed. The local clubs that opened their doors for those evacuation centres became frustrated with the lack of support and leadership from government agencies. Eventually, the recovery committee received support by way of an army colonel who had connections with higher up in the government and was able to progress things faster again. Without the army, the committee would have been left behind. My observations is there was no leadership from the combat agency throughout the event with no one publicly standing up to lead the community through the biggest disaster in living memory. In the absence of a leader, each community fended for themselves and in the case of Broadwater, we all stood up and we worked together to lead our own way through our own town right from the start, from when we mobilised, when anyone who owned a boat mobilised to help out, to those today, even today, who volunteer at our community hub. I'd just like to see from this committee, three recommendations. If we can see that an automatic flood gauge is put in the three towns of Broadwater, Cabotree and Wardell that currently have no way of telling besides looking at a manual gauge, they then become unsafe. Secondly, I'd like to see a community gauge that's ready, come from the combat agency that includes these towns for future flood events, as we were left off any public messaging that was released. And that's all, thank you for allowing me to go.
And after Michelle Brown, we'll have Joel Orchard.
Okay, just from this point of view, I'll apologise because I've only got a few notes because I didn't find out till really late last night that this event was happening. I'm a resident of Burns Point Ferry Road, which was typically the worst hit initially in the West Ballina area. Prior to that, I lived in the Blue Mountains for forty three years, so I'm only a new resident, but all my children live here. And we've been coming here for twenty years. So the fact of the matter is, with the response from police, SES, fire brigade, from my point of view, it didn't really exist as from a person who lived in the Blue Mountains for forty three years and fought fires or also helped other people in the area and I worked in the community and was involved in that community. So to see a no show from anyone, eventually the SES came a few days in while my daughter and I were trying to sort things out about the house and what was happening inside. But basically, it's a great community and I'm staying here because I left a great one, but I still want to be a contributor to the Ballina area. The people who turned up to help us were the local rugby club and different community people from churches and other leadership groups. And even while we were cleaning up, they would bring food, water or come and check on us. Now, prior to the flood, we live on the Ballina Keys and we had two king tides. And my neighbours, who I'm very friendly with, ranging from the time of seventeen years to twenty one years, have never seen the king tide as they were in January. So when we found out that the Ballina council were doing a flood mitigation exposé, we went along on the eighteenth of January. Now, it turns out this was their third flood mitigation report in twenty twenty one years. And my road, Burns Point Ferry Road, was number fourteen on the list. Tamar Street, which runs parallel with Ribb Street, the main road, was number one. Anyway, we all had a chance to speak, but we entered submissions that we had a deadline, I think was for the seventh of February. Last Tuesday, one neighbour and myself went along because I'd read the report. We'd all read the reports before we went to the eighteenth of January. We know our submissions were received and then last week, I was sent an email from the council to acknowledge that our submissions are now being projected into a file, it was called ten point twos, you know, subsection to whatever. And I was handed that file, which shows the topographical maps of their projection of what was going to happen in twenty eight years and seventy eight years, because their dates were twenty fifty and two thousand one hundred, which is a question I raised on the eighteenth of January, Mother Nature and all that. Anyway, I wanted to acknowledge that fortunately, they've taken into account some of the ideas or acknowledged what we submitted in our reports. And moving forward, they've taken us from number fourteen to Burns Point Ferry Road now being number two, behind Rand Street, which is perpendicular to their original street of Tamar. So I was thinking the mayor and one of the councillors might still be here because I didn't get a chance to address the meeting the other day. So I said to my friends, I'll come today and we'll say, yes, job well done, they've acknowledged us as residents. But they're going to use the same engineers who've produced the same thought process over the last twenty one years and they've been given a grant and they're giving it to the same people because they said they don't want to spend the money on a tender motion. Now, to me, this, nothing's been done in this time and with our being on number two on the list, it's a two to three year projection where the works might commence, but that is not satisfactory. So I don't know if the council is money poor or time poor, but nobody's been to anyone's home to acknowledge and see how people are, the residents, and if so, even leave a note to say you've been because I'm not living in my home and I've had seven moves and in and out of my children's homes. But anyway, all I want to acknowledge is the council is saying what they're going to do, but the rest of Ballina, where do they fit into the new scheme? And also, I want to, I hope I haven't repeated myself, but I want to acknowledge the Ballina community and the support that came through and helping. And was there anything else I needed to say? Oh, as from the Blue Mountains, we, as I said, the first responders and even the police would come down and sound the sirens, so you knew what was going on. But we did because we lived there a long time. But Shane Fitzsimmons, dare I say, he was the man who informed us, who kept us in the loop and he was action man. We didn't have that up here. We had no one at the top really letting us know and what was going on in our area. So that's all I'd like to say, but thank you for coming and thank you for listening to the residents because they do deserve a fair chance.
Mr. Joel Orchard and then we'll have Geoff Finch after Mr. Orchard, thank you.
Thank you, committee, for this opportunity. My name is Joel Orchard and I am one of the volunteer coordinators at the Wardell Flood Recovery Centre. I'd also like to acknowledge that this has been an immense amount of volunteer contributions and our hub is only one of many that have sprung up around the regions that follow quite a unique and agile but a pretty classic model of a volunteer or a community led flood recovery centre. And I just wanted to paint a bit of a picture of what that actually looks like so that this committee can look at how to resource these community led recovery centres in the future. So essentially, after the very urgent needs of the flooded past, the small group of people managed to find some facilitation role and to support the coordination of all of the volunteers that were coming into the community to participate in the recovery, to all of the foods and goods and emergency equipment that was required for people living in very desperate times at that moment. And then we've sort of developed as a much more coordinated organisation that provides an increasingly complex set of protocols that the community requires in terms of now trauma recovery, suicide prevention, housing, food access and more. We continue to provide effective and essential community care and connection for the community and services that we estimate to support over four hundred flood affected households all the way through from Ballina to Broadwater and inland, even through Pimlico and Mutionvale and of course, including the Cabotree Island communities and all along the coast. So within the first couple of months, we established an organisation that had approximately four full time volunteer coordinators and a whole host of coordinating effort that went into supporting volunteers that were really coming from all over Australia at that time. We had people rocking up from Sydney, Queensland, Far North Queensland, Victoria and even further afield, bringing donations and in some cases, staying for weeks. And we've even had some volunteers that have now stayed for months on end at their own cost. A lot of these volunteers are paying for accommodation in the community while they work for free and have taken time or leave away from their professional jobs to contribute immense amounts of hours to our community. Within this time, we also were tasked with coordinating Australian Fence Force personnel when they were in town. We delivered over five thousand hot meals and ready made meals to the community within the first couple of months. We took on the coordination of a number of full time mental health service professionals that have provided absolutely critical mental health support in our community. They're still continuing to provide up to twenty caseload visits a day and they now do outreach throughout that region as well. We managed as a group of locals to leverage our personal and business relationships and we've distributed over about twenty thousand dollars worth of fresh produce to the community. And we've networked with a whole host of other community organisations and really facilitated an immense amount of support from local agencies like the Rotary Clubs and Lions Clubs and church groups and even those from further afield. And we're now developing ongoing relationships with a number of neighbourhoods from cities like Sydney and Melbourne that are adopting us as a community of support. We've since had to incorporate as an association so that we can open a bank account and receive funding and we're even developing a strategic plan with the recognition that disaster recovery is a really long process. And I note, we've reflected on all the levels of government literature that community led recovery centres are absolutely the best and most agile way for recoveries to be successful. And I've got a whole list of resources that a number of government agencies have produced that proves that in point. And our question really is and recommendation to this committee is, why don't we see that literature that the government's produced being put into action? And where is the support that this literature designates will be available for community led recovery to be sustainable? Because we know that we can't provide the level of support that's going to be required ongoing unless we have the resources to do it. And at the moment, we are now looking at including nearly double the number of people in our community with a demountable village from flood victims that will be placed in the Wardell community as well. And I just finalised by saying that even the Royal Commission into Natural Disasters said that most communities that go through a disaster of this kind will not recover before they hit with a new one and that we really need to establish and maintain the social infrastructure that we've built now so that we can be resilient into the future. Thank you.
Mr. Geoff Finch and then we'll have Melita Wood.
Thanks for you all coming up here. Sometimes, I was born and bred on the North Coast and sometimes we feel like we're kind of like overlooked. State governments and federal governments tend not to look at this area until it's an election, but anyway, you come after the election, so that's all right. I'm a small business owner, I live in the Byronshire and I also have a background in doing volunteer aid work in foreign countries where they're war torn and I'm used to disasters, I'm used to seeing, you know, personal hardships and that kind of stuff. So it's nothing new to me, I've been in Kurdistan, Iraq, Sudan, former Cambodia when it was war torn, that kind of stuff. So I know how to work with bureaucratic stuff and also with people in general. The night of the flood, generally I take precautions. My house is in what they term flood libel land and Michael Lyne was the mayor for Byronshire. And the Shires tend to give us regulations for a purpose and I was able to build my house according to the regulations flood libel. So when the flood came up about a bit over a metre in my house, I have two stories. My house is relatively untouched, I use aluminium doors, concrete floors, cement walls and all that kind of thing, so I hadn't lost anything whatsoever. I'm also a small business owner, turnover in the six figures, so I lost three vans as well. And it's the contents of those vans that kind of, as a tradie, we need to get back on our feet again. So with the council, with their education and all that, with our houses and all that, I find it a real blessing, I think it's not a problem whatsoever. It's such a thing that I see as contributory negligence and that is that we contribute sometimes to our own problems without going we contribute sometimes to our own problems without going through those regulations and sticking with them. With the night of the floods, I was on a job probably similar to the size of the RSL Club, had spray guns set up, all set up, ready to finish the job on the Sunday night to hand over to the people by the Monday morning. However, I go home and then find out there's a flood. And the SES, unfortunately, I also do voluntary search-life savings, so I'm aware of voluntary organisations where you, things can go wrong. Okay, so I don't attribute any blame whatsoever in this disaster. It's just a natural disaster to me. So with the SES, the text was sent out about 5:00 AM. The flood actually come up at 2:00 AM in my place. The text message didn't arrive until midday. So by that time, stuff's just floating around. I just want you to look out there, you can't quite see it now, but the Richmond River's out there. So most of the small businesses, our paperwork and all that floated out and off to the east coast of Australia, somewhere in the Pacific Ocean. With my cars, generally I'm quite diligent when there's a flood coming. I look at the bomb and all that kind of thing. So I'm able to move cars and all that kind of thing. But in this situation, it come up so fast, I'm not subject to the river. Although I live that close to the river, I'm subject to just wet area that comes up, water rises up, can't get away because of the council drains fill up and that kind of thing. No blame whatsoever to council, it's just part of the problem with a wet area. So with the cars, in our neighbourhoods, one person's car locked up and blocked the escape of all the other cars. So I get up at seven o'clock in the morn, I'd been up all night till about two watching this water come up again. My goodness, it's not going to stop, it's keep going. Until I just gave up and went to bed, seven o'clock in the morning, I hear a gurgling noise and I think, okay, I better get up, this flood's starting to come up. But a car had blocked the roads and no one could get their vehicles out. All I could do was just watch my cars just fill up with water and I think I lost about $200,000 worth of stuff, okay? Some of it's insured, some of it's not. So with that, my home office, you go into this kind of a mode where what do I rescue first? Do I rescue my tax station paperwork because I've got tax coming up? Forget any other things, you know, forget your personal stuff, forget the cars, they're just going to float off. I'll deal with that in maybe two or three days' time. But what do I rescue first? And so you start putting in this plan and then you raise it all up, but the flood water keeps coming. And so you raise it up even higher and the flood water keeps coming again. My goodness, I was born here, I've never seen a flood like this and it's coming so fast. And you get to two o'clock in the morning, well, you don't have lights, you cannot photograph anything for purposes later on, for insurance purposes or Service New South Wales. You cannot justify or prove that your place actually got flooded because the next day the flood water's gone. And so what happens is then you're just left with this smelly mess to clean up. So after this here, Service New South Wales came along and think, great, this is good. We are given a hope here, breath of fresh air, thinking that we're going to be able to get grants to be able to reinstate the wording, our small businesses back to where we were before the flood, so we could carry on and do our service for the state. However, there's a lack of communication that Michael Lyon pointed out in the Byronshire. All the communication went down. We had phones didn't work, internet didn't work, not for about, I think, five days. My phone actually went through the flood, I think it had in my back pocket, couldn't get it to work. So you have a sense of relief when Service New South Wales go, you know what, we have federal government funds here, we will start to hand them out. And so what happened was, there was this, when I applied for a grant of about $30,000 to cover a vehicle, two of my vehicles were insured, one wasn't for another purpose. The insurance companies, no problem whatsoever. I had a great time with, excellent with insurance companies. When it came to Service New South Wales, and just let you know that, when I was talking with New South Wales Service on the phone and in emails, they record things for training purposes. So in all fairness, I said, you know what, I'm letting you know that I will be assessing you as well as a Service New South Wales on behalf of what you're doing for the New South Wales Government and I will inform you what happens. So to reinstate my small business, I came across this non-existent fine print that doesn't exist. Or if there was, in this fine print, there's this terminology that can be used to bring it back against you. I can use it to work for me or to bring it back against me. So I was going, I'm glad to see you guys here because I was planning on writing to subsequent departments and committees and that kind of thing to get this message through that somehow or rather, when there's funding that comes out for a tradie such as me, there's something like, I think, five thousand tradies that I know of that last count a couple of weeks ago that have applied for funding but were just knocked on the head, just like that. And out of those five thousand tradies, we get this kind of a to and fro. Yes, it's approved. In my case, four times emails went backwards and forwards, yes, it's approved. And you think, great, it'll be in the bank in three or four days. So you go and do all the paperwork for them, maybe six or seven times to prove things. And the last one that really got me was that I was told, okay, Geoff, if you go out and you give us a letterhead now from the bank showing that you, oh, by the way, we have to spend the money first. $28,000 on a vehicle and another five, like my spray gun's $5,500. So we tried to cut costs, we just got it repaired for $1,300. I had to go and borrow that money. I had to borrow the money and then have to repay it again because Service New South Wales promised me on a number of occasions, yes, we'll have that money back in your bank account three to five days. So what happened was, borrow the money and then comes all the things, no, we want to see your name on that, we want to see that you actually paid for that, we want to see. So I'm showing bank statements and all that. Yes, you will get it, no, you won't get it. We've closed your claim. And you kind of go, are you serious? So I wrote back to Service New South Wales, I want someone who understands small business, not this person that keeps on referring to something that has nothing to do with it. So I went backwards and forwards four times and I'm saying this so you are aware as for an inquiry, what we're up against. And so what I found was that it doesn't actually come through. Yes, we'll approve you, but the approval goes nowhere. It's just a road show, as I said, it's a road show, you know? I went to the road show. So I'm just letting you know that, that, you know, the cruelest thing that happened to me was on the fourth time when they rang back, they actually rang me, oh, wait, go into the person's name. And I'd asked for it over and over and over to give me another person to deal with that understands small business and understands the North Coast flooding. These people had no idea of floods, I'd asked them that. And I was told, okay, Geoff, if you go to the bank now, this was at 1:30, if you go to the bank now and get a letter from the bank with your name on top of your statement where it showed that I paid for the money and I paid for the vehicle that I bought and paid for the other stuff, then we will give you that money, it'll be in your bank account this afternoon. So I went to the bank and I kid you not, I got to the front door of the bank, the phone rang again, that same person, I've just spoke to my colleague, we've decided that your claim is closed, you're not getting it. Bang. I walked out and I thought, what was that all about? The problem is the mental health issues. This has been now twelve weeks, it's exactly twelve weeks, that the people of the North Coast have gone through this kind of stuff. And to put up with Service New South Wales, putting us to and fro and to and fro like that, and playing with people's emotions and you get your hopes up. The difference with the aid work that I do in third world countries, I know what I'm up against. I know I'm up against corruption, I know that I'm up against the finances that have come as donations from overseas. The difference with Australia is we have the money here. The federal government already allocated the money for it. Service New South Wales, all they had to do was just disperse it and it didn't happen.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Malita Wood and after Ms. Wood, Mr. Alan Anderson. Sorry, we just, out of respect, we just remind that we have a lot of people on the list here and we can try to stay to five. I understand.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for letting me speak. My name's Malita Wood and I have lived in Ballina for thirty-seven years and in my home for twenty-nine years. My home is in Grant Street, number one street. And it is a post-war house built for ex-servicemen, returned servicemen, so that's how old my house is, never had water in it. So I think the main issue is that over the years that we've lived here, it has rained a lot. Ballina's known for a lot of rain. And we did get a lot of rain in March and, but over the years, we have seen the change in how the water flows. The water, when we first bought our house, had an open drain in front, which wasn't that attractive and probably not that safe, but it worked a lot better. Soon as we got curb and guttering was the first time there was water appeared in our street. Followed by that is a lot of the building that's been going on and development. Out towards that way out near Aldi, is a new estate called Fern Grove. They built that Fern Grove on reclaimed water, wetland, which is a flood plain. They built, we talked, other people have talked about the road down south, the north road is built on a flood plain. If you build on a flood plain, the water's got to go somewhere. And if it's not going where it's supposed to go, it comes back and it's coming back into Ballina. We, like a lot of people, we heard there was going to be a flood, oh yeah, you know, Lismore's flooding. We have never flooded. My house, people have lived in my street, it's never had water in it. So we didn't take much notice. We did get a text message, but we thought, oh, that's a bit strange. And then we got another one. So my son and I, we just thought, well, maybe something might happen. So we chucked everything we could, like on the beds and on the tables there, thinking this is not going to happen. It did. We lost all our furniture, things, we'd lived in the same house, all our children's lives. So what I would like, I think what needs to happen is that take on board what the effects this flood's had on the community and individual people. But how it's happened and how it could have been, I think, there's a lot of indications that's needed to be taken into for this to see that it could happen. And building on flood plains is not the answer. And if they do, we shouldn't be building houses that are on slabs, we should be building them on piers so that at least the water can go underneath because the water's got to go somewhere. We live where it rains and I know that it was extraordinary rain, but I can see that, you know, there's just been indications on and on that those things should have been done. The other issue in our street is that if you build a new home in Ballina, it's built up above everyone else's home. So what happens there is there's a new home, a newish home next to our home, water came down the street, round the corner, straight under my house, hit my back fence and splashed back and made a wave into the back of our house. If you saw Carl on the Today Show, you would have seen it flowing down Grant Street like the river. And it wasn't just flood water, we had sewage through our house. That's why I have no walls in my house because sewage went through my house. And that's my other question, how can a town like Lismore have a sewage plant that is not flood-proof? Our river will not be able to be swum in for, I don't know when. Our beaches are still filthy because they're pouring Rory sewage into the river. So how does Lismore not have a flood-proof sewage plant? And I think someone needs to answer for that. Just one other note, I'm the coordinator of Meals on Wells and not having any internet and phone was a disaster for us because we could not ring any of our clients because they all have landlines or mobiles, they don't have, we just didn't have any. The other issue, we couldn't pay for anything unless you had cash. So there were people in Ballina, were paying for food for other people because no one had cash. We raided our grandkids' money boxes so we could go buy bread and milk. So I think that's an important thing, the internet being down and on other community services was really bad. We had to wade into people's homes to check that they weren't there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Wood. Now, before, before Mr. Anderson starts, I just want to apologise to our witnesses that were scheduled for 5:30. I'm sorry you're going to be a little bit late, so I apologise for that. And after Mr. Anderson, we'll have Tom Aron Fox. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, hello, thanks for coming. I won't be very long at all, I didn't plan to do this. I just wanted to say that I was affected by it and I think that everyone else has been, there's been a lot of mental health problems still happening and not diagnosed. Communities really suffering with the level of disaster that happened and nervousness and yeah, really sad for that. I was affected, I'm a, I grow cane and rice and dryland rice and of the, like the boys will speak about the cane industry, I won't touch on that. Of the rice, I think there's only approximately thirty growers of us. There might be only five of us that are able to salvage crops. This is going to be a huge detrimental stakeholder-like thing for the developing industry. With the drains, like the council spoke there before about it, like mitigation works and that, there's been no mapping or anything or, there's been three studies done and no physical working, working's happening on the ground and everything is just deteriorating. That's pretty much all I've got to say, thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to share my family's experience from the floods this afternoon. I'm here to represent my parents, Peter and Janelle Knox, who reside at Ross Lane, Lennox Head. Unfortunately, they're interstate and couldn't attend today. They have lived on the property for thirty-seven years and it's where our family was raised. It's also next to Dead Man's Creek and has a drainage network that feeds that creek that hasn't been manually cleaned in at least ten years. This has been raised with Ballina Shire Council by my family over the past ten years and especially in the past five. As we've noticed, the flooding frequency has increased in the area and my family's property experienced flood again last week and that's the sixth time this year and potentially up to fifteen times in the past twelve months. We now have weed growing on the property that comes from the creek and it continues to be that wet, it now grows where there was once grass. The black water now remains on the property for up to three weeks and this feeds into North Creek and obviously is not a positive runoff. The poor drainage around the area is contributed to from a lack of clearing that has happened in the drains, the culverts not being cleared, the gates being overgrown or full of mud and not working as they should. There's also a unused landing strip at the southern end of my family's property that contributes to holding the water. Dead Man's Creek remains full at at least eighty percent all the time now. In speaking to my mother this morning, she said, how full is the creek and is it raining again? Such is the frequency that this is now the conversations that we have regularly. Any time it rains, we expect that the property will flood. The flood that we experienced in February and March inundated the property either side at least ten metres more than it ever has and in some ways twenty metres, inundating two sheds with machinery and cars in them. Luckily, we had time to prepare and machinery's been able to be salvaged. The flood got to the front door of the house and what saved it was my father siliconing the front door. Their jet ski was able to be tied up off the veranda of their house. They don't own a houseboat. This is completely a rare event and completely blows my mind to see those photos of it again. They were isolated on the property for up to a week on both occasions and when it floods now, this past week, it took three days for the water. And when it floods now, uh, this past week, it took three days for the water to reside, for them to be able to leave. The water is deeper when it floods Ross Lane now than it has been previously. And as I mentioned, it floods more frequently. Uh, the mayor of Ballina Shire Council mentioned earlier in his inquiry about the poor state of, uh, the river. And, um, for the works, mechanical works that need to be done, there's concerns about the acid sulfate. But when you have raw sewage going through there, why does this matter at this point? The river is in such a poor state now that if the land was dry enough, we could be out there tomorrow excavating the drains ourselves with the equipment, we have the experience, we'll fund it ourself and go do it. The holdup is purely waiting now for it to dry and once it is dry, the holdup is purely government bureaucracy and multiple levels of it. We need the state government to support works being done and not saying wait for a catchment management plan or a coastal management plan to be done. We need action on the ground to happen now. Because in the meantime, waiting for those plans to be done and then remain unfunded for the next however many years, my family's house will flood in that time again. Um, so I guess just from this, um, also just tie lighting that's three months on, our house remains packed up because it flooded again last week. There's no photos on the walls, there's the bare furniture there. Um, everything is on the top shelf of a cupboard. That's how, um, my family lives every day until this wet season will pass. So hopefully that's October, but I mean, that's beyond anyone's control. So flood mitigation, I guess, and the action and support is, um, my key points from today that we really need local government to be supported by state and federal. And when there's action to be taken, we desperately need it to be done now.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So we have, uh, Vivian Gorrick and then after Vivian, we have Beck Hayward.
Good evening. Uh, I live in Westland Drive, West Ballina. Um, I rang the gentleman, I bought the house off seven years ago. He bought it new and never known the street to flood, ever. Because there was a retention pond around the side, um, Horizon Drive and River Street. The retention pond was twice the size of Bunnings with its car park. And it used to hold mega litres of water. It has been filled and building put on it, uh, since two thousand and nineteen, which now the water's got nowhere to go except down our streets. Our drains are on the high side of the road. Uh, I did explain to the engineer that I'm seventy, I'm seventy-four and I've never seen water run uphill yet. And we're not learning by our mistakes. Uh, they've just approved a housing estate in West Byron on a floodplain. Um, they're gonna, they're gonna do another one at, um, Deadman's Creek on a floodplain. Where do they think this water's going to go? You know, like I mean to say, we were, we were, we thought we were pretty lucky because we never got any water because of that retention pond. But when it got filled, we knew we were going to have trouble. Because you, you know, you're seeing all the mounds of dirt coming in, you're getting dumped in the hole. And we thought, haha, we're going to be in for it and sure enough, we were. But, you know, what do you do? It, uh, it's just like, oh, well, bad luck, you know? And the thing that irks me about the whole lot is the whole area is now flooded and the insurance policies are going to go through the roof. So that's all I've got to say, but I've actually got some photos here that shows you the size of the retention pond compared to Bunnings. And, uh, you can see yourself what was filled.
If you wish, you could provide those to the committee.
Okay, I'd like you to see them because, uh, you can see where they've filled in, uh, with hard surfaces. And then you can see Bunnings, so you know the size of Bunnings. And this is twice the size and we better have no worries.
Thank you, ma'am. So we have, we have Beck Hayward and then we have Kerry Turpin.
Hi, everyone. Um, my young family lives at East Wardell on the way out to Patches Beach, which you would have went past yesterday in your bus. Um, our family left at two AM in the morning as we saw the water come from the back of us. I just want to raise the concerns from many communities, um, about lack of maintenance. Um, I'm not sure if you're aware of Bungar Walpen Levy. It was destroyed in twenty seventeen, major damage, never been repaired since twenty seventeen. We've also got the Woodburn Fabra Dam that was there and was vandalized, hasn't been repaired. Um, the most important thing is the flood mitigation drains. Um, they haven't been looked after, they haven't been maintained for many years. There's been many committees involved lobbying, trying to get this done. Um, but it just seems to be passed on, reports being done, never, ever a resolution. Um, our house was affected because of these drains. The water from the back of our property didn't get out the week before. So we have an original farm cottage that went through the fifty-four and seventy-four flood. We've also got a home that we built in two thousand and six to the AHD of three point five metres and it went through that as well. Um, if our floodgates could work and open, um, and our mangroves weren't protected and we could remove them from the floodgate, we would have had half a chance out of East Wardell. Because the flow and effect from all this water coming down, um, resulted negatively to all our communities. In seventy-four, there was a area in Boundary Creek in Moirlands Lane where the floodwater naturally went to the ocean, but then got filled back in. Um, there's also an oyster channel out at South Ballina that was once used. Uh, there's all these things that farmers and people that have lived here a long time talk about and know, and I think it's important that you could look at them and see why it's happening, why we haven't maintained them. Um, Dougal Saunders is our State Minister of Agriculture. He has the power of veto, but unfortunately, he hasn't come to see us, hasn't come to our area and looked, hasn't used his powers that he could do with fisheries to help us get these works done, um, to remove the overgrown mangroves and weeds from these drains. Um, and so, yeah, I just, there's a big problem with flood mitigation and it needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Kerry Turpin and then Mr. John Sykes.
Hello, my name's Kerry Turpin. I live in Wardell and I was fortunate enough not to be impacted with the floods at my home. But on the Monday, I decided that it was going to be bad. So I approached the, um, committee of our Sport and Rec Club to set up an evacuation centre. They were very hesitant. Most people felt that the flood wouldn't affect our town. I lobbied them pretty hard and we managed to set up a, I said, this will be our evacuation centre. I went to the fire station and said, that's our evacuation centre. We contacted the SES in Ballina and, um, we were sort of part of the whole deal. That Sport and Rec Club had no facilities. It just had toilets and a commercial kitchen and space and high ground. By the Tuesday, Tuesday morning, we had probably sixty to seventy people there and no food. So my daughter and I jumped in the car and drove into Ballina and collected fifteen kilos of sausages as they were closing the road back to Wardell. So from that time we were set, we were cut off by road. We had no phone and we had no internet. We had no coordinator, we had no police, we had no SES. We were fortunate enough to have a girl who works for Community and Justice who had lost her house in Wardell. So she turned up in her brother's clothes and a phone. We needed to log all the people that we had at the evacuation centre. So my daughter, who was eight months pregnant and needed to get back to Sydney, couldn't because the airport was closed and we couldn't get back there anyway. She sat down and started to log all the people that we were, that were in Wardell, that were either living in someone else's house. So the half of Wardell that wasn't flood affected had something like thirteen, fourteen, nineteen people staying there in their vans, in tents, with no food because we couldn't get to the supermarket. I was fortunate enough, I'm a volunteer for the, um, Marine Rescue Evans Head. Three of the boys had gone up to drop the fuel trailer at Gennella Bar and they couldn't get home to Evans Head, so they rang me and said, do you have room? So I added them to the list and we had thirteen people at my place. Luckily, one of the fellows had belonged to the local emergency, um, council and he was able to make contact with the SES. The Royal Fire Service raced in and got a, a handheld radio so that we could talk to Ballina SES. We, our problems were that we had all these people, they didn't have their pills, they had the clothes that they stood up in. We had people that had their animals that wanted to sleep with them. We had no, nobody, no coordinator to say, this is how we should run it, this is what we should do. Unfortunately, on the Monday night, the club, which was a registered club, decided to open the bar. And that brought with it another huge set of problems. We also have a, a group of Tongan workers in Wardell. They refused to stay at the evacuation centre because of some of the issues that you can imagine when we add some alcohol. And so we had to find accommodation for them. The other problem is, I was in my Marine Rescue uniform and the Royal Fire Service were in their uniform. But many people questioned who gave us the authority to do what we were doing? And the answer to that is no one. We had no help from anyone. We have a police station in Wardell and even that was not functioning. The army was supposed to drop food in, um, that, we kept getting a text to say that they would drop the food, that never happened. We know that some small communities were able to get private drops of food from Seawell, Channel Seven, et cetera. We felt that the army was, was not very well coordinated. After we evacuated them after day four, because we were not suitable anymore as an emergency evacuation centre, I went and worked at the Royal Fire Service. And again, the army and resilience came in and, and it was difficult because they have no idea of the local area. So again, another set of problems. But thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. I'm Mr. John Sykes and after Mr. Sykes, Richard Cramden. Mr. Sykes. John Sykes.
Thank you, sir. I'm a cane farmer on the Lower Richmond, where our property's halfway between, uh, Woodburn and Broadwater on the western side of the Richmond River. Um, we, we, I spoke to a neighbour, um, on the Sunday morning and he said, it looks like it's going to be a pretty big flood. So we'd built a new home four years ago. Um, it was built, uh, five hundred above the one in one hundred year flood level, which was the fifty-four flood level. And, um, on the, uh, Sunday morning, we started moving our machinery. We had seven tractors, there was two harvesters, twenty ton truck, um, plus our car and our U. And I said to the two neighbours, I said, you better come up to our place because we're up high and, um, it's a big mound that we built, there's a lot of room there. And they brought their cars up and they came and stayed with us. And there was myself and my wife and my grandson. Uh, he had two cats, my wife had a little dog and I had two barn cats. Uh, they were all in pens and the neighbour, one of the neighbours had a captive dog. And the other neighbour was an elderly lady in the seventies. And, um, anyway, we thought we were fairly prepared. On Monday evening, we got a text saying to evacuate. By that time, the water was over the roads, probably a metre, far too high to travel through. So, um, we felt fairly secure in the pla-, in the house and didn't think, you know, we were going to get flooded. And about eight o'clock that night, um, the water, um, was rising up above around the seventy-four flood level. And by eleven o'clock that night, it started coming in our home. And, um, about two o'clock in the morning, everybody's getting very uncomfortable with water rising and it was up around our knees and we thought we'd ring the SES. So we did, they said, we can't do anything until daylight. So the first signs of daylight in the morning, um, I rang the SES and they said, we have seven hundred people to evacuate. We'll, we'll prioritize who we pick up and, um, we can't tell you when you'll be picked up. So I rang a neighbour and he's an old sea captain and, um, he said, I'll be over there, just wait till I get my boat sorted. And he came over with a boat, telling another boat. And unbeknownst to me, a neighbour that was closer to, um, to Woodburn, they came up, he told, they got rescued and they said to the chap in the boat, you better go and see how we're getting on. And they come down in the boat too. So by the time we got out, my wife's only a shorty, but the water was up to a chin. And we got a flabby out of the pool and she was in that. And, um, uh, we used the, um, it's pretty hard to get in a boat when the boat's up so high and you're so low. So we managed to get the slippery dip, which had a ladder on it and we managed to get everybody in the boats. And, um, when, when we left, it, it was pretty dangerous to go into the power lines because they were so low to the water. So we went around the back of all the farms. And, um, when we got to, um, to Wardell, the SES at the bridge said, um, the water's still rising, we can't get you off here, you'll have to go to the public school. So we all went there and, um, during that day, anybody that had, um, like elderly people, my wife's got a breathing problem, and, um, they took them in a boat to Evans Head. Now, I got picked up in the boat and my grandson in the afternoon. And the depth sounder on the boat was saying seven metres of water. And we were going over the top of cars and you could see through the water just the, the cars and the U's. So we stayed out at Evans Head till, um, we could get on the roads back. And we had a friend up at, um, Lismore Heights where we, he let us stay in his university accommodation. And we got back on the farm probably in about, um, ten days' time. And, um, we found the water had kept rising after we'd left it because it went up to, um, the top of my head. And, um, we were just absolutely amazed it went that high and it covered all the machinery, all the cars were completely submerged. But one of the problems that carries on from that is the fact that it stayed over the top of our cane. We had one-year-old cane, so we grow cane for two years. And, um, so the one-year-old crop stood under the water that long, but it died. So the income for twenty-three, twenty-four is gone because that's our income. And then to replant anything, you have to plant a young cane, which is one-year-old, all that's dead. So I'm just speaking, there's one cane farmer, there's lots of cane farmers are saying. And, um, so it's going to be a very financially difficult time to go through nineteen, twenty-three and twenty-four.
Thank you, sir, and we'll be taking some evidence from cane farmers immediately after this. Thank you for your time.
That's all, thanks.
So we'll have, we'll have Mr. Richard Cramden, then we'll have Wayne Crawford and then, um, Bronwyn Madry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to be able to speak to you. Uh, my name is Richard Cramden, I'm a chartered professional engineer. Uh, I was born in Lismore in forty-four and experienced a majority of flooding. I was born in Lismore in forty-four, experienced the majority of flooding. I now reside in Ballina, retired to Ballina and I reside at fifty-five Burns Point Ferry Road. And I fully experienced the problems of flooding in early March, first and second and suffered from the flood problems. I'm very fortunate, I have flood insurance and I'm being looked after very well by, by insurance company. I have not got any major problems as far as rectification of my house. We are having one difficulty and that is being able to get stable prices to do the work. As you're probably aware, we've got limited trades in this area and I speak from my thirty, forty years as a consulting engineer in this area. And our major problem is not having the trades and not having a lot of the materials in this area for the rectification and restoration works that are urgently required. I can spend another six hours with this committee talking about that, but the situation is there now and I sense it from my observations and speaking to a number of my old builder clients, there's a certain root factor coming into the element. And as a typical example, prior to March this year, to, to put down a square metre of tiling, you'd be paying in the order of sixty to sixty-five dollars a square metre. Today's rate is in excess of a hundred dollars. If you want a tradesman, you pay for it. Also, in my retirement, I've become, both of you might use the term a professional writerian, I'm caught up with the community and I'm servicing the hubs and I can see a lot of people out there stressing. And we, we have a major problem coming on our hands now with people who have no money, their houses have been condemned and they have no direction and I sense it's going to take something in your reprieve for six years for these people to get themselves stabilized again. But it's not going to be a fast process, there's no magic bullet for this problem. It's going to take a long period of time to sort. I've also had the opportunity to study what Ballina Shire Council's putting forward for their flood mitigation. I've been caught up in flood mitigation in two places, that's when, let me stand.
Give her about a minute. Give her about a minute.
Thank you. I'm just trying to catch up my memory again.
Flood mitigation Ballina Council. You were talking about flood mitigation Ballina Council.
Yes, okay, I've had the, I've been very close in coordination with council and they've got the flood mitigation programme there which has been launched. And I do recommend that this panel give serious thought to, to funding it and getting something done because Ballina has a major problem. It is now, it has the stigma of that of a flood town. Never had it in the past, just local flooding and now we have a flood problem. My residence was valued at one point six million dollars prior to the flood and I would say I'd be lucky to get half that now. So you can see, and I'm a retiree and it's been a major blow, but again, I'm not complaining because I'm fortunate, I have good insurance cover. But I don't know whether I'm going to get insurance cover next year and that's the problem we've got. And it's got to be addressed. Now somewhere the government has to step in and ensure that we have got insurance policies next year. Look at the problem in Lismore, no insurance and it has created havoc and stress. And I've been a Lismore man, I grew up in Lismore, I lived through all the floods there and the flooding was somewhat of a, I can't say a social event, but it was there, gone in three days and everyone's back to normal and we'd have our flood sales and it, and it worked very well. And where we, we could handle floods, we'd spray the place out with, with the disinfectants and we'd get back to work. But now with this last flood and it went well in excess of the one in a hundred year prediction of the seventy-four flood, I witnessed the seventy-four flood, I was a trainee at Shire at the time and I was fully aware of what was going on because I was working with SES and I was, had the local knowledge of north of Lismore. And guess where all the flood came, all the flooding came from, north of Lismore. So I'm fully aware of what problems are associated with the hydraulic gradients from Nimbin to Lismore and Repentance Creek to Lismore and all those valleys. Situation as I see it is, in the sixties and the seventies, we had an organisation called Public Works Department and also we had flood mitigation councils and had looked after all this. And that, and that's all gone, it's now an adjunct of a council or it's an adjunct with three other organisations and put down the list. We have a lady here who's, who's saying that their flood drains through their drainage societies and that are non-existent. It was all built back in the sixties and the fifties, I was part of that and it's never been maintained, no money, no money. And that's what it gets down to. We've got to start looking at it very closely and I'm hoping this panel will take it back to the upper house and start to stamp on tables because we've had a gut full of it. I've seen the damage and it's not going to go away. We've seen climate change, we've seen the excessive climate and it's not going to go away. We have had this major flood and it's one in a five hundred year flood, never dreamed of in the engineering world and we've got it. And we're going to have it again.
Okay, Mr Crandall.
Thank you.
Mr Wayne, Mr Wayne Crawford and then Bronwyn Madgery. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Well, I, I wasn't expecting to speak here this afternoon, I walked through the door and then the opportunity was presented to me. So thank you to that young lady. I'm a resident of Ballina, have been for thirty-two years and has moved up here from Sydney. I'm also a member of the Rotary Club of Ballina and Richmond and from day one of this flood, we became very active. We were in the likes of our own town, Ballina, Wardell, Broadwater. I don't know how many sausages we cooked, but I reckon we could have just about circumnavigated Ballina with the amount. So we've been very active as far as a Rotary Club is concerned. And because we were seeing that we were boots on the ground and we were going to be straight into it, over this period of time from the flood till about, I suppose about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, our club has been given the responsibility from private money to get out into the community with seven hundred thousand dollars. Now we've started doing that and we have been doing that for some time in the form of grants, sorry, vouchers rather. These are vouchers made up which we have purchased from local businesses. There are a pack of five hundred dollars worth of vouchers and we started off by knocking on doors because there was no other communication. And we've just about finished Ballina and we're going to try and get out to the likes of Wardell, we've done some and then further on to Broadwater. Now the thing that has become very, very evident and we've just been doing vouchers today again, is that when you knock on somebody's door and if they are home, they greet you and you can't help but see the despair in their eyes. These people have been terribly affected. They've been affected from youngsters who thankfully or hopefully will have the chance to rebuild and go on. But we've come across seventy and eighty year old people, very staunch, not really wanting any help, but by God, they need it. And what you're seeing in their eyes is that, "I don't know what I'm going to do." Those who've got family in the area are very, very lucky, they can move in. They are still in a state of despair, but they can move in. There are so many who don't have that luxury. And we'll continue to give our money out and we'll continue to support our community and we'll continue to look at the eyes of these poor devils who've been affected. But I don't want to have to, in twelve months' time, say, go back to them and say, "Where are you up to?" And they'll say, "Well, nothing's happened." Richard mentioned that there's a lack of trades in the area and who can, a lot of these people can't afford it anyway. But if in twelve months' time, we come back and we see these people and they say nothing's been done, well, damn the New South Wales Government, because that is where it has to be, the red tape has to stop. They're fellow Australians out there and they're counting on you, they're very resilient, by God, they're hurting. Thank you.
Mr Crawford, thank you. And our, our last public speaker is Bronwyn. Is Bronwyn here? And then, I'm sorry, we'll return to the next evidence on cane farmers.
Hi, Bronwyn Madgery, that's how you say it. I wasn't intended to speak tonight, but I'm a resident of West Ballina, I live behind bunnies. We have never had water in our street. In the two thousand and seventeen Lismore flood, I think it reached my letterbox, so when we got the SES warning on the first flood, we were like, "Okay." But then we had, the water started to creep up and creep up and we put the, the, we put the sandbags in place and my husband and I drove out at seven o'clock at night in the pitch back dark with our two dogs in the back and went up to the lighthouse and slept at the lighthouse with the fifty or sixty other cars that were there with no water and none of us knew what to do. I was very fortunate, I put a Facebook call out and a fellow nurse gave me a place to stay, which I stayed at, I thought for one night, but it ended up being seventeen days or seventeen nights. We returned to our home, we slept on air beds and in fact, only last week, we replaced my son's air bed with a mattress, so he may have a mattress to sleep on. What I actually want to talk about is the impact that it has on my community, just in my little street. You see, they have a thing called Make Safe, they're going to come into your house and make it safe. And we all, in our naivety, thought that meant make it safe for us to live in. What it actually means is they're going to rip out your walls, they're going to rip out your shower, they're going to rip out your toilet and you have nowhere to be. So my neighbour on the corner, who ran her family daycare from her house, is now sleeping in her back porch with her nineteen year old son and has been given some dunas and that is where she's sleeping and her seventy year old parents have hired a caravan to sleep in their front yard. My neighbour next door, she had a Make Safe done and came back home to Make Safe and realised she actually didn't have a place she could live in and is lucky enough to have a daughter to live with. My husband and I have not had our house made safe yet. We are living in our house, its walls are still intact, we don't actually have anywhere to go because I need to be within a certain distance of the hospital, I have two board of collies, it isn't really accommodation. So at the moment, my house is not made safe. My son will move away very soon because he doesn't want to live in that environment anymore. My neighbour two doors up from us are actually making their own house safe because they don't have insurance. This is one street, one street in West Ballina that I can rattle those stories off for and it expands out so far. We have so many elderly neighbours that my husband, when he walks the dogs, touches base with, that are living in these environments with no walls and no water or one powerpoint and this is Ballina. This is not Lismore, this is Ballina and we've sort of been a little bit put behind and I'm okay about that because this one has been really affected. But we have no community hub, we have no community connection, I suppose, in our environment and that has left a lot of our elderly very, very vulnerable. When it first occurred, we had people, I, I just opened my doors, I had strangers walk in and rip things up. I don't even know, there was one man from East Ballina, I never met him, will probably never meet him again, and he came and ripped things up for me and left and I thank him, whoever he is. But this, this concept of people having their homes made safe has actually left my community and my friends in Lismore who've had their houses made safe and have no insurance, very, very vulnerable. And I think that needs to be cleared up and made really, people need to be really made aware of what that means to them. They won't have walls, they won't have a toilet, they won't have a shower, they won't have a kitchen, because that's what my friends, my neighbourhood, my friends in Lismore, my fellow nurses, that's what they've been left with from this flood. And that is going to go on for approximately maybe six months to a year to maybe two years. Insurance companies deny homes after Make Safe, so now they have to fund it themselves. That is what we're living in.
Thank you. Now, now, thank you, everyone, we will, that ends our, our public, our public forum section and I'd like to now call John Clark, Dennis Bowling, Jeff Pye and Florence Deacon to give evidence on the cane. Now, attention, everyone, we'll, we'll resume our witnesses. Gentlemen, can I make a little announcement that applies to you? Mr Bowling? Could, could all witnesses, starting from my left, state their name and position and then swear an oath or affirmation?
This affirmation, I got here, I don't care either way.
You gotta say what, you gotta make a choice.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
And may you state your full name, please. And you, state your full name, please.
Oh, Dennis Ray Bowling.
Thank you, sir. Mr Clark.
John James Clark. I swear the evidence is now about to be given, me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Mr Pye.
Lesley Jeffrey Pye, and I'm the chairman of the Richmond River Cane Growers Association. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Now, gentlemen, under our rules, you're eligible to make a short statement if you wish, would you like to do that, Mr Pye, Mr Clark, Mr Bowling? A short statement at the beginning?
Yeah, I'd like to just say that...
Couple of minutes, gentlemen. And then we'll ask you questions.
I've been a cane farmer for over thirty years, I've grown up in the East Coricai area. Our family's been in that area for, since eighteen sixty, so quite well aware of what happens in the area floodwise and I, yeah, sorry, I've just, yeah, it's, no, thank you.
If you want, we can just start off with questions, gentlemen.
Well, I'll just give you my background, I'm on a family farm, it's an original selection. And I've now been on that farm for the last, I think, thirty-five years. And I first came to that farm back in nineteen eighty-six and, uh, in the next three years, experienced seven floods. And none of them have even come even close, this, uh, event that we've just taken place with. So we're all pretty on the ball as far as flooding goes, but, uh, this is an absolutely catastrophic event. And, um, we really do need assistance because, uh, in the cane growing area, I know all our members, ninety percent of them, haven't got a home to live in. So, uh, we're in dire straits and we're also, uh, going to need a lot of assistance to get ourselves back on our feet. We think we've got a great industry, but we're really gonna need some government support to get us back on our feet.
Now, Mr. Pye, I'll get right down to it. We make recommendations to the government. Now, you talked about assistance. How would you like that assistance? What shape would you be? Where would you like it being? Could you please detail that? And then after that, I'll let my other colleagues ask a question.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you a bit of an outline of the industry here and, um, you know, the good things we do and how you could assist us. So the New South Wales sugar industry has cultivated thirty-three thousand hectares of land on the Tweed, Richmond and Clarence flood plains for the last hundred and fifty years. Eleven thousand hectares are cultivated on the Richmond by a hundred and eleven farmers. It has three mills, one refinery, supports four hundred and fifty-seven farming families and two and a half thousand jobs in associated fields. So we're, we're a big employer in the region. We also supply fuel to two cogeneration plants that supply half of the North Coast's electricity needs. The New South Wales sugar industry is partnering with other industries to make the Northern Rivers a carbon neutral zone. Sugar canes remains the world's fastest producer of biomass. No other plant comes close to it. Above the ground, Richmond sugar cane captures up to five point five tonnes of carbon per hectare per year. The amount sequestered in the soil is being determined, but, uh, there could be as much as what happens above ground. Research has also shown that sugar cane provides huge amounts of stable carbon fixed, uh, phytonutrients. That's like a, a carbon stone and that can remain in the ground for up to a thousand years. Sugar cane remains the most suitable, resilient and productive crop to grow on tropical and subtropical flood plains. Planting and harvesting are the two largest and most critical operations in the production cycle, being both labour, labour and capital intensive. Harvesting is organised and completed by harvesting cooperatives independent of the grower. So it's all controlled. Planting is completed by individual large growers, combined farmer groups and private contractors and is an economic and logistic concern for growers. Compounding grower stress is the small window for planting in September, October and wait time for contractors in past seasons has seen smaller farms left unplanted. The February March floods have displaced many growers, particularly on the Richmond. And the priority is to repair residents and have these growers return home. Harvesting the twenty, twenty-two crop will provide growers with a delivery price, which has been reduced. Cash flow from the mill when the cane is crushed and that will allow them to pay for the harvest and give them operating cash. In these exceptional circumstances, this additional cash will be used to repair flood damaged residents. The immediate priority for displaced farmers. So not getting cane back in the ground, we're looking to try and get our homes back. So what we're wanting is planting monies diverted for flood recovery. There's a good chance the plantings will be significantly reduced this year. The flow on effect will be decreased future mill throughput, reduced quantities of biofuel for the cogeneration. This proposal will, will complete the twenty twenty-two plant, securing throughput for the mills and fuel for cogeneration refinery. The proposal will also build resilience into the planting operation by maximising efficiency of medium sized planting operations, allowing them to plant more cane, for example, neighbours and close by fields. It will eliminate waiting times of planting and possibility of people missing out. So I've got a five point point here. We, the cane growers are very proactive and, uh, we like to see that we're coming up with solutions rather than whinge about stuff. We'll whinge about stuff, but then we'll tell you how we reckon we need to fix it. And we've been, people talking about flooding, it's amazing the now the community support that farmers have got now, seeing that now water's gone through their homes as well. So what canos would like to see in relation to floods and flood mitigation. I've got a five points here and then I'll elaborate on each point. Re-establishment of a single, well-funded flood mitigation authority. Removal of complex and conflicted legislation and intergovernmental agency conflict that prevents flood mitigation works and processes. Restoration of rural flood mitigation infrastructure to its designed state. Regular and ongoing maintenance of flood mitigation infrastructure. Removal of flow obstructions in river and to flood escape options. It's been penny I told you. Flood, 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 drainage, drainage, drainage. So number one, re-establish of a single, well-funded flood mitigation authority with a mandate to get works done. Richmond River County Council was established in nineteen fifty-nine after the nineteen fifty-four flood. Since Amalgamated, now known as Rouse County Council, the renaming of it speaks its loss of identity. In the first thirty years, it was well-staffed, well-funded and operated efficiently and effectively. Since the late nineteen nineties, its importance as the lead agency has been taken away by local councils' interference for government agencies and lack of funding. Confusions battled for importance by other government agencies has left no one in charge. Point two, removal of complex and conflicted legislation and intergovernmental agency conflict that prevents flood mitigation works and processes. All attempts to navigate these complex rules, regulations and policies to complete widespread flood mitigation maintenance has failed. There are seven government departments having jurisdiction over land, water, vegetation, surrounding flood mitigation infrastructure, local councils, RMS, New South Wales Fisheries, Fish and Vegetation, New South Wales Parks and Wildlife, Marine, Mammals and Reptiles, Crown Lands, DPI, New South Wales Maritime. It's a bloody nightmare.
Any, any. Excuse me, Mr. Pye, um, is that part of a written submission that you've, you've made to the committee? Is that part of a written submission you've made to the committee?
No.
The document that you're.
No.
Well, if, if.
I've got a copy of it for you.
Yeah, if you could table that for us, that would be good.
I'd just like to state that, as the cane growers, we've been baffling this stuff for years. We have, so, uh, it's no new, new news to me. So, um, any of these authorities can veto works by the flood mitigation authority. New South Wales Fisheries is most obstructive and uses MEMS, which is the marine state management, as its preventative tool. Current situation is known with, within our local community as yes minister on steroids. So point three, restoration of rural flood mitigation infrastructure to its designed state. There is no ongoing plan for upgrading or maintaining flood mitigation infrastructure. Farmers want restoration, upgrading of this critical infrastructure as a matter of urgency. New South Wales Fisheries want it removed and the flood plain returned to a swamp. On-ground works have been replaced by thousands of costly studies, modelling done by a range of government agencies without coordination and with little benefit to farmers or rural communities. Flood mitigation has become a cash cow for universities and private consultants at the expense of farmers. Regular and ongoing maintenance of flood mitigation, point four, infrastructure. Regular maintenance, maintenance of government owned flood drain outlets ceased in nineteen ninety-six. Conflicted legislation and overreach by public servants have stalled on-ground maintenance works. There is no plan to restart it as a regular schedule or any idea of who is responsible or who will do the work. Clogged outlets, cracked pipes, crumbling headwalls and failing levees are flooding agricultural lands after major rain events. Neither the funding nor the political will is there to do this work. So point five, removal of flow obstructions to the river and to flood escape options. This is our solutions to what's gone on. Reinstate regular channel dredging of the lower reaches of the river that ceased in nineteen seventy-four. Increase the number of floodways under the New Pacific Motorway, as initially recommended by the independent engineers and ignored by the RMS. Replace the fixed weir in the Tuckanbill Canal with a lay flat or vertical lift structure as initially recommended by the community. And cut a permanent gated opening to the sea at Boundary Creek, or it could be a canal or a piped, uh, area out to the sea to relieve flooding.
Thank you. And if you would like to table that or provide it to the committee, we'll, we'll incorporate it.
Yeah, so who do I hand that to?
Uh, just one of the committee.
One of the committee secretaries. Mark, do you have a question?
Yeah, just acknowledging and thanking, uh, you, John, for allowing us on your, uh, property to see your operations today. Can you just, you know, I just flesh out a bit more about the importance of getting that increased throughput through the, the, uh, the mills? And why, and, and how that leads to, I guess, the importance of those plant subsidies that, that you, that you really need?
Yeah, so we, the, the mill, basically it's, I don't know what the figure is, but it used to be like seven million bucks just to turn the on switch. So you've got to have a certain amount of cane to go through it. So the optimum is maybe eight hundred thousand tonnes a year. We're looking at, you know, it's gonna be around five hundred thousand. Next year, we might be pushing to be two hundred and fifty thousand tonnes because, as you've seen, the two-year-old crop seems, most of it survived, but the year-old crop has been severely damaged. And so there's gonna be a lot less cane next year. If we can get a lot of plants into the ground, we might be able to cut a fair lot of year-old cane that's healthy for the next year. And then definitely in two thousand and twenty-four, that cane will be on ground. So we know we're gonna have a tough year next year. It's a bit hard to get out of, but we might be able to cut a bit of year-old. But definitely the year after, if we can get plants in the ground, we'll be up and running again. People have their cash flow, the mill will have their, their throughput. And the cogeneration plants will also have the fuel to be producing that green power, which, like I said, powers half the North Coast.
I just, and just pick up on one, uh, point that you made about these drains and I guess the bureaucracy that's holding up. And you mentioned MEMA.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh, is it the Cape Byron Marine Park? Is that their justification for?
No, no, it's, uh, it's the marine state manager, the whole east coast of New South Wales.
Right, so they're not, they're not actually specifically.
The Richmond is the, the trial plot, the, because they've ascertained that the Richmond was the worst river on the east, on the east coast.
Yep.
And, um, yeah, everything is centred round the coastal flood plain, whereas when I went to school, water ran downhill and that's where it all, the floodwater came from, out of the hills. So, and a lot of the degradation is coming out of those, once rainforest areas running down onto the flood plain. So, uh, it's just, why hold water back behind these, you know, degraded flood channels? So the flood channels are perfect to the river, but it's, that's where fisheries are holding it up. They will not do any work where the drains are. And so they're quite happy for that water to stay in there. It's stagnant and rotten, ruin crops. And then when eventually it does come out, it's deoxygenated and whatever, and causes fish kill. I just can't, why wouldn't you just get it out while it's fresh? It just.
Mr. Pye, um, my colleague Scott Barrett has a, has a question.
Um, the seventy-five thousand dollar grants that the state government's giving out, that's for work you have already done on your property. But I understand it has to be done by a third party. You, you can't, I guess, invoice yourself for work.
No, 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 that's all right.
Can you just sort of touch on what that means and, um, the impact that has and what, how you'd rather see that system work?
Well, we were, we'd, we'd rather have it so that we could get the money upfront than do the work, provide the receipts, because as you could imagine, cash flow is very short at the moment. And like I've said before, a lot of people wanting to fix their homes first, so any money that you've got saved up, because like so many people have got nowhere to live. That's the problem. But also because of the constant wet weather, no one can do any work anyway. Honestly, I've driven around my farm twice on a pod bike and nearly didn't make it back. It's that wet, so.
Having to use a third, I'd imagine you could actually do some of that work yourself and it would be more cost effective.
Oh, it would, yeah. But, but legally, we can't do that. We can't charge our time out. And I, and I imagine it's very hard to police.
I can understand the reason why the rules are set up, but, uh, because it could be wasted and, uh, but, and then there's different sized farms that need different amounts of money. So if they were given seventy-five thousand dollars to, to collect it back, if they didn't spend it properly, it could be a pitfall. But the, one of the things that, um, a lot of our farming stuff is small and there's a bit here and a bit there. And by the time, if you go to contractor to do bits and pieces, like mine spread around in, uh, five different blocks with about an eight-k distance between them at, uh, from end to end. So if we could have money to do stuff and maybe even employees and extras that we get, that we can spend the money in a fashion that is, we can make, go much further with it rather than, as I was talking about, the tiles on the, uh, how much a tile was to, from previous to now. That's the same with buying gravel or getting trucks or machinery. It's all, uh, it's hard to get and it's, uh, got expensive. So there's a lot of, lot of gouging, price gouging in the, the whole system in, uh, in that type of thing going. And, and, you know, there's a lot, a lot of area to be covered.
Uh, Mr. Clark, Mr. Pye, we have a question from colleague Sue.
Thank you. Um, I know that, um, uh, the, you know, the maintenance of the drains would have significant impacts on, you know, water quality, et cetera. Is, do we know or have we seen or can we predict whether that would in fact have made, if they had been maintained and they were better, in better qual, opened, et cetera?
The flooding would have been less?
Uh, yeah, at a, at the fourteen point six metre flood that we've just had in Lismore, do we think that it would have had?
Wouldn't have had an effect in Lismore, but downriver, definitely the Tuckanbill Canal with that block in it, it, um, it, yeah, holds back water and the early water could have got away. So like if it had dropped the flood level by three hundred mill, it wouldn't have gone through my house. And that would have been in a lot of houses that are, you know, normally safe, but, uh.
Part of the, uh, what you're talking about is, okay, we've got the flood, it's there and it's, it's at a height that we've never seen before, but everything's left blocked and closed. So the, it's the after effects of drainage, what you're looking at. It's like the, the people, the lady was talking about her pond, you know, it kept it away and then it run out later where this is what happens. It's all blocked up, it's all full and the, uh, water stays in there, becomes more stagnant, more stationary. And, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's, the whole system is not working correctly because of the collect.
I made a big written submission, you'd have that. This flood, I'm on the lower, it's just below Woodburn. And I've been there eighty-nine years. My family's been there since eighteen sixty-six. The farm, the biggest flood on record, there was big ones in the eighteen nineties. My grandmother was in the house. It never got in the house. Fifty-four got about a foot in the house. Uh, I built my new house on a mound, six hundred metre above fifty-four. And then there's two bricks and then you get up and this one went over a metre in my house. There was nothing like it. And I'm on the lower end and it just never got away. And the highway, the new road, has to have something to do with it. But I've written in there, in the fifty-four flood, my brother paddled in on a surf ski from Evans Head, not far, paddled back to Salty Lakes, as they call it. And he said you could have kicked the water into Salty Lakes with your foot. Now, this is nearly two metres higher and as far as I know, never got near it. Now, since fifty-four, all that heath area has been sand mined. And would have been, you know, wouldn't have been levelled out and all whatever when they finished. And it was open heath in my day. I drove a jeep over half it, probably illegally. Uh, now you couldn't ride a horse over it. It's trees and that they made them plant. They would have planted anything. I'll, you know, that's not my say. But for some reason, the water could not get away. And this time, uh, in years gone by, they'd broadcast on the wireless flood levels and such and such a creek here, there and everywhere. And, uh, they'd have an estimate every hour. This particular, the, the big flood that hit Lismore, uh, two years ago, I sat on the ground and worked it out. It'll be about nineteen forty-five. That was, you know, down to the road, nothing much. It might get in the shops in Woodburn. It flooded Lismore out. This one, we were sitting, watching TV, all was late, eight o'clock, had tea. I said to mother, this won't be too bad, by the sound of it, Lismore's going to cop a cane, probably be up nineteen forty-five. That'd be eight o'clock. Ten o'clock, my daughter arrived from the old house and said, we're going to have to get out. Dad, back up, oh, I said, it might get somewhere near it. At ten o'clock, she said, it's up on the lawn. And Jude, the daughter rang the SES, some of local people got us out about eight the next morning, and it was, you know, a foot in the house then, but running terribly strong. The water never ran there before. The water always rose and just sort of drifted for two or three days. This flood was nothing like it, and the water just could not get away for whatever reason. And that's why it was so big and so bad. There's still, still water all over my place.
Thank you, Mr. Boland. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Mr. Pye. Mr. Clark, thank you for having us at your farm today. Thank you for sharing your time with us. And you provided the five-point plan to the secretary, is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any other questions from any other members?
Is Mr. Boland's submission?
Yes, yes, Mr. Barrett and Ms. Cusack.
So we've chatted a lot about the flood drainage, the flood drains, they're not something unfamiliar, sorry, but given the, I guess, the equipment farmers have, the knowledge they have, and the interest in keeping them clear, who do we think is best managed, best placed to manage it and keep them clean? And could, if it was to be farmers, could concerns about the other impacts be managed through ways that you can see through codes or whatever?
Yeah, well, we've actually got an acid, you know, acid sulphate plan for our cane farms, so everyone's regulated, we're self-regulated, and so we fill out a map on where all our drains are. We know where our acid hazards are and how deep they are, so we've all shallowed all our drains, et cetera, like that. But we can do all that, and the fisheries guys didn't like the fact that we got self-regulation, and that's where a lot of this drainage stuff is coming from. They got their noses out of joint, that we had our self-regulation, they wanted to control us. So they can control us all right, right at the floodgate at the river. And a lot of it is just that. It's bad blood.
It's audited by the council, so it's not a free-range thing.
It's audited.
If we do any majors, we have to have it approved, and we have a schedule that allows what to do. And that, actually, in the past, a lot of the farming practices that were done in the past, we've shallow drains, and we've done laser levelling and other land improvement things that, that help all that, that problem that the fisheries perceive that we, that's causing them the problems.
Yeah, so an example, so honestly, for not a lot of money, we could go right along the river and clean all those drains out, and, you know, get the spoil, put it in special spots, put lime on it, get it right. So Rous County Council actually did three drains, but only tiny little things on the edge of the road. So just to do the paperwork to get the permits, twenty-four thousand dollars for three little scoop drains. Then another twenty-four thousand dollars to concrete the whole things into the river, you know, me to you. Ridiculous. Whereas could have got an excavator in there, scooped it out, put it in a pile, abundant thing, put lime on it, left it for a year, got rid of the dirt elsewhere. It's just complete overreach of bureaucracy. I just, it does my head in. And like I said, we've been doing this for, well, since nineteen ninety-six. It is unbelievable. Someone needs to just step in, push them out of the road, and let's get the job done. Because even the residents now of these areas are complaining about exactly the same thing. It's not just the farmers. So in a way, it's been good, there's been a bloody big flood, because now everyone realises what we've been going through for so long.
Ms. Cusack?
Yes, I just wanted to ask about the sugar mill. How many people does it employ and what's the prognosis for it?
I'm not sure how many in the Broadwater Mill, but I know, I think there's directly two and a half thousand people in the whole sugar industry between the three mills and all the associated people. We're hoping to get going at Broadwater by the fourth of August. It's the cogeneration plant, all the electrics in there that sent to this stumbling block, just trying to get parts, et cetera, like that. What we're wanting to do is start our harvest when it dries out enough and start trucking cane to the other two mills, just to at least get the harvest going. And that's where we're also wanting assistance in the transport costs to get there, because otherwise we just won't get our harvest done. And we just don't know how the mill's going to perform, because it's been stripped right out all the electrics and stuff like that, you know, it's probably going to run like a hairy goat for the first month. So, and we're going to have contamination in cane, mud. When we're harvesting, there's just so much rubbish in the cane. It is a, that's one of the huge things, you know, we need help there. We've been told by the DPI that it's not our rubbish and that the EPA are meant to look after it, but.
How are they going to identify whose rubbish it is?
Well, they just, it's not ours.
No, I know.
Yeah, but they said, well, DPI says they claim it. But you're honestly, like, you'll burn the paddock of cane, like, they're in rows, they cut a row at a time, you're going to have to have someone there looking the whole time and dragging stuff out from in front of the harvester. It's going to, like, you have to employ at least another one or two.
We had a meeting tonight, this afternoon before this, of our harvesting call-up for our projected price for harvesting next year, and it's now, I think, we were eight dollars
Last, last year.
And now we're ten dollars. That's if the cane that was predicted to be there, and if it gets any worse, it could go to twelve dollars. And that's partially, there's a fifty percent, fifty cent rise in the inflation part of the thing, and then there's also a dollar a litre more for fuel. So that's, that's paid out. So on top of this, we've got the re-establishment costs, like I spoke earlier about the price of fertiliser being more than a thousand dollars a tonne than it was last year, or the regular type price. And then we've got all the inflation on top of it. We've got extra work to do in cleaning and, you know, like, it's, it's just, well, it's carnage, as I described it, not to, it's a disaster, but it's, everything's just, yeah, just a mess.
The harvesters will also pick up a lot more rubbish and a lot more damage to the harvesters.
I guess where I'm going with this is just to try and get the economic significance of your industry in terms of the employment and in terms of its local economy.
Yeah, I think, I think.
I wonder if an industry-specific package is.
We could supply that through the, through the, we could get the mill director, the mill CEOs and things, we could get all that material easily. The office is here in Ballina, it'd be the chief accountant's here, the CEO's here.
That would be really helpful.
So we could, we could, you could go down and sit down with them if you wanted.
I think we're worth about two hundred million a year.
And in terms of, sorry, correct me.
Catherine, Catherine, I'm just mindful of using their, no, no, of using their resources and things like that at this time. I'm really worried about using their resources, collecting data for us that we in fact have a good sense from DPI. So I just don't want to divert their resources onto collecting material.
Oh, no, it's only. My understanding is that.
Gentlemen, can I just make a comment?
One last submission, please. As cane growers, we like to keep ourselves away from the mill, even though we are fifty percent owners of the mill. We're our own people and we run our own show. Okay, so I, the mill has their, like, they can go and, you know, look at their transport and stuff like that, and if they need assistance, but our growers need assistance.
Sure, I just want this industry to survive.
I know, well, look, that's why I went through that stuff in the submission before, we've got a great story to tell. We, we probably don't advertise ourselves well enough. Honestly, we tick all the boxes. We probably visibly don't look all that great because we burn our cane and there's the cane ash and, you know, we're just a visible industry, but really, in the end, we, there is no waste, it's a really good story.
We're a lot cleaner than a lot of other industries around that look a lot better.
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen, on that note, I thank you for your time. I thank you for sharing your experiences with us and allowing them to come to your property. Thank you, gentlemen, and we'll consider what you've said.
Thank you. If you've got any questions.
No, thank you. Now, we'll call the last witness, Mr. Kevin Lewis. I'll remind you that you're the only witness, so I need you to state your name, your position, and either swear an oath or affirmation.
Okay, I'm Kevin Lewis, I'm principal of Xavier Catholic College here in Ballina.
An oath or affirmation, sir?
Pardon, no. Thank you. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you, sir, and please have a seat. Now, sir, if you, if you wish, you can make a short opening statement, two to three minutes, if you wish, just giving us a bit of context, and then we'll ask you a few questions.
Sure, thank you. I've written some notes, if that's okay.
That's very good.
So it's my assumption that you wanted to hear about our unique experience as, as a facility in Ballina as a result of the flood.
Yes, sir.
I've laid it out day by day, I hope it doesn't go for too long, but I just wanted to sort of let you sort of get a feel for how events played out for our college and so forth. So on Monday the twenty-eighth of February, my role as the chair of a committee that I was hosting and conducting via Zoom was continually interrupted by callouts from my staff as the flood event moved downstream from Lismore to Ballina. So throughout the day, it was clear to me that the events in Lismore and the unprecedented water levels were clearly going to cause significant problems downstream here in Ballina. So we made preparations for the college community to provide limited supervision for our students the following day. So this situation enables parents to make the choice to keep their children home and for staff to keep themselves safe where there might be danger. The night unfolded with harrowing reports of evacuations, lack of coordinated support and personal tragedies all over the news media that night. So by the time I woke up on Tuesday the first of March and checked my phone, there was a Facebook post requesting new evacuation centres to support those displaced. And a colleague principal of mine mentioned my name in one of those posts and suggested that perhaps Xavier College might be seconded into that effort. Never having been part of a flood relief effort before and therefore not knowing about any procedural requirements, I responded that we'd be happy to do this, and throughout the day, small numbers of people started arriving and we were happy to help. Also that morning, I took a text message from my assistant principal, Mrs. Amanda Falvey, who had been contacted by someone at SES to request the use of our school buses to transport SES crews and displaced families. I took the contact number, called them back and put our buses into action. I immediately went into the college, picked up one of those buses and headed to the SES headquarters to assist. Throughout the day, myself and other staff members ferry crews and families to evacuation centres and other locations as directed. By the end of the day, about twenty people had gathered at our college based on a grapevine notification that we were open to assist with evacuees. My last task on that day was to drop some families to the sport and rec centre at Lake Ainsworth, and it was here that I ever heard that there was a delay there because their official certification to be an evac centre was not yet complete. It got me thinking, we don't have any certification at my college. Sorry. Well, I found it amusing too. So I concluded my drop-off and returned to the SES base to discuss this with the leading hand there, whose name I don't recall, I'm sorry. I related what was unfolding at Xavier College, and she told me that because we weren't officially approved, we had to disperse the families to properly certified locations. It was not an easy message to give, but it was done, and my two APs and I headed home to our own homes. Not five minutes after arriving home, I got a call from the Department of Communities Injustice, Representative Tony O'Brien, I think is his name, but I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong, requesting that we reopen Xavier College. I indicated I had spoken to our Catholic skills office in Lismore, that all of our staff were sent home and that families had been relocated, we couldn't open up again. He pleaded and indicated that all necessary documentation was being completed on our behalf. So what could I do? We reopened. No sooner had I returned to the college and opened the gates to start receiving people, that bus after the bus started arriving. Cherry Street Bolo and the Richmond Rooms were in danger of going underwater. Then I was notified that the hospital needed to evacuate as well. Xavier needed to provide a space for this to happen. We allocated the bottom floor of our college Margis Hall, and by way of explanation, Margis is a Jesuit term, we're a Jesuit school, which means to do more and be more in the service of the community, quite fitting in the circumstances. I watched in amazement as between the hours of nine PM and one AM the following morning, with the help of our college senior students and staff, the bottom floor of our hall transformed into a fully functioning field hospital. Separate from this, our other college facilities quickly started filling up with block after block needing to be opened up to accommodate more and more families. We had two nursing homes at the college, Crowley and St Andrews, at least two high needs dependency units for disability services, independent living age persons without carers in support, and of course, the general population, including the homeless. All told, we believe we had up to seven hundred people at any one time and possibly a thousand through and more if you count Holy Family Primary School next door. All of which seemed to be coordinated by just one person on site at the outset. I believe her name was Meg Valentine, but again, I'll stand corrected if I'm wrong. She seemed totally exhausted on that Tuesday night and Wednesday morning after, after helping set up similar evacuation sites in and around Lismore, and she was looking for relief, and it didn't appear to be coming anytime soon. By Wednesday, I rang Murray Deeps, who was the principal at Holy Family School, and told him that he needed to open up. We couldn't take all of these people on our own, and he did so without hesitation. By this day, after more than twenty, twenty-eight hours of wake and continuously supporting, I went home to rest for a couple of hours. Medication and prescription support seemed to be now available and operating through the main hall, but wasn't reaching everyone on our campus site. Red Cross was intermittently on-site to ensure food donations were being allocated. Meg had been replaced by a new staff member in the hall. She had a couple of other team members who operated in that space, but I don't recall them leaving to venture into the rest of the school to oversee the efforts. I hazard a guess that at the time, they had no idea how many people we had on site and would not be able to support them with such a small team anyway. My staff and family volunteers were feeding the enormous number of people here, including specialised meal for hospital staff and patients. Eventually, lines in the local pizza place Quatro's, among others, jumped in to help us out. My staff were toileting and washing aged care people who had no support. They were dealing self-care patients and as such received no support that we could see. But they were on Lilo beds laying on the floor and couldn't get themselves up, no matter how independent they were. So often they were lying in their own mess until we were able to get them up and shower them. My staff were acting as security until Murray and I arranged onsite support. My staff were registering names and contact deals, contact details on the Red Cross site for Rebecca Wheeze with little or no guidance. We had no idea if we were doing it correctly or not. My staff were receiving donations, sorting and storing them. Our students provided respite for children of families with movie rooms, game rooms and outside play to allow parents to rest and recover. My staff were using their own internet and data, limited as it was, and personal social media accounts in order to make communications because the Telstra service was so poor. Telstra arrived with a truck and a booster equipment after we had packed up the hospital and all evacuees had gone. No one seemed to be in charge. By Thursday, throughout the day, as news of the waters receding in town emerged, Jenny Cleaver from Ballina Hospital, who was helping coordinate their efforts, hinted they might be moving out the following day. I have to state that the hospital staff were amazing and so very grateful for the support that we offered them. We were similarly impressed by their efforts. A reporter from The Australian was on-site and wrote what I thought was a less than, less than accurate article about the events that took place. It was quite disappointing. Friday, by the morning of Friday, it was confirmed to us that the Ballina Hospital would indeed return to its main site. They would be out by lunchtime. We'd also been made aware that the town was reopening, not by any official memo. We'd also been made aware that the town was reopening, not by any official memo, and that many families were being permitted to return to their homes. Given this information, our Catholic Schools Office requested information on whether it was feasible to return to normal schooling the following week. I went to the primary school where, um, DC, uh, the Department of Just Communities and Justice were headquartered across the road to discuss this with Murray. And together, we spoke to the coordinating officer who continually told us this will need to be referred up. We couldn't get a straight answer. It was very frustrating that we could not get a commitment or plan from the person in charge on the ground. Rightly or wrongly, with some indication that the in-town facilities were being opened like the Bisk, excuse me, the Bisk and Southern Cross School, we informed those who needed to know that evacuees should be relocated so we, so that we could become schools again. The job of relaying this message to the evacuees in our hall was less than personal and very cold. There was lots of disappointment and dismay directed back at the college because of it. Later that morning, a representative of the premier arrived to clear the way for him to visit the school. When he learned that the bulk of the evacuees had moved on and that the hospital was now returned to its proper site, he was not interested in the least about what we had experienced. He was quite dismissive of us and told us that the premier is not coming up to visit schools. He needed to visit active sites. I felt so enraged and dismissed by his attitude. I was visited by another local politician on site and expressed my frustration about the arrogance of that person. I'm not sure what happened subsequently. A replacement crew arrived from the Department of Communities and Justice, I think, and we found them a little confronting. One of my staff members was asked what credentials she had to be supporting evacuees. Confused, she asked for clarification. She was pressed further. What title do you have as a support person? She replied, GSD. We get shit done. We felt alone and dismissed on so many fronts. It seemed as if the attitude was, they are a school, they know how to organize stuff, they can do it themselves. To date, I've received letters of thanks from the acting CEO of North Coast Local Health District and from the Ballina, Ballina Hospital Head of Medicine by way of thanks. We've received dozens of letters and emails from evacuees on site who managed to return home. Support and kind words came from surrounding schools, from our central office, and other, other connections that we have further afield. I have heard nothing that I recall to date officially from the Department of Communities and Justice. I confirmed this with Murray again today, neither has he. I received an online communication via one of our school apps from Monique Bellamy, who I believe, I think, works for that department. I don't know what position she holds at Communities and Justice. Ironically, when the floodwater started rising again a few weeks later, the ADF turned up to do some recon- reconnaissance at the potential of the college being used as a field hospital again. I was asked, next time around, what would I need the ADF to do? My response, everything. Because that's what we did. Costs incurred by the school for cleaning, relocating donated goods, disposing of worthless and unusable goods, replacing equipment broken or gone missing had been borne by us. Our insurance doesn't cover this. Communication was poor and non-existent at times. Evacuees were in the dark, as were their family members. It was a harrowing experience.
Sir, I think I'm going to take a bit of a liberty here, and on behalf of the committee, I want to say thank you on behalf of the program. Thank you for, for sharing that story, your experiences. And do my colleagues have any, any questions?
I'll probably just have.
Mark.
Just on the endpoint, you talked about how none of the costs have been reimbursed. You have, being informed by every principal, I know how important money is to students, and, you know, every dollar counts. Do you have a sense of how much, you know, you, you should be reimbursed or, or owed because of the?
I could take that question on notice to you because we've, we've investigated a number of avenues. We've, we've looked into our own insurances through, through Catholic Church insurances who insure all of the Catholic schools in the region. We've, we've made representations to Communities and Justice, um, at this point to no avail, but that's only commencing because our, our, our insurance claims have been knocked back because, um, because we were taken over as a, um, uh, a venue and, and not under our own, um, I suppose governance at that point in time. It was, uh, so that our insurances don't cover us for that. I will, I will say to you that it's, it's a disappointment to us that, you know, in terms of the New South Wales Department of Education, um, response to flood-impacted schools, there was a, a thousand dollars for, for individual staff members and five hundred dollars for individual student men, uh, students to reimburse the costs associated with loss as a result of the flood to public schools only. The private Catholic schools were excluded from that, so, um, whatever costs were incurred by our families and, and our staff is something that they have to wear themselves.
I'll, I'll take another liberty, and I feel that from your evidence that you've given to us and your statements, that I think that even though your experience is quite distressing, I think you'd probably do it again, wouldn't you, to help the community?
My, my leadership team saw the defense, um, forces come in a couple of weeks later when it looked like those floodwaters are rising. And, and the, the comment that came from one of them was, not again, Kevin. And I said, well, what do we do? We, we're, we're members of the community and we need to support the community, so yes, of course, we would, we would put our hands up to do that again. Of course, we'd have recommendations on how that might be done better moving forward and, and, and some pre-planning around that would be useful as a community, um, not just as a school for Xavier College, but an entire community. Um, cross-sectoral, um, cross-departmental, um, response to that, I think, is, is necessary. I know the floodwaters were unprecedented, unprecedented, and it's difficult to have been able to predict what might have happened, um, as a result, but, um, it's happened, so I think we need to be able to plan for it to happen again at some stage.
Yep.
I was just going to take some liberty and say you should have never even had to investigate going through your own insurance. You should have never even had to come to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Um, and I don't know if you can answer this question, but I'll ask it anyway. So when you got the initial shock, I'll call it that, of you can't take anybody because you're not certified, and then miraculously you were certified right away. What changed? Was, did anybody physically visit your site and, and do a checklist to certify you, or was it just?
My understanding in the conversation on the phone with Tony O'Brien was that it was being done on our behalf in, in some dark location that was not made known to us, but.
So no physical inspection of your site or anything like that?
No.
So one minute you're not, next minute you are, all of a sudden.
Yeah, and I took it on trust that that, that had been done on our behalf.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, this is no reflection idea. I mean, the, the mere fact that you had to be certified in an emergency situation is, is just bewildering. Um, but I didn't know, that's why I wanted to tease out whether actually somebody came out physically to the site and had a look and said, oh, no, you know, you've got fire escapes and whatever it happens to be, everything's certified, away you go. You don't even think that that happened?
No, and I'll be highly complimentary to, to Meg, who I mentioned from the outset, who was there, uh, in the initial stages.
Is she from DC, Joe?
Hey? I believe so, yes. Um, she, she was very active on the site, and she was into my office, she was in the lunchroom and, and working with my team. She was visiting various spaces around the school, and, and she looked dead on her feet. She'd been doing a lot of work, as I understand it, over the preceding few days. Um, and when she was replaced, and I thought that was a godsend for her, the same level of, I don't know whether interest is the right word, but, um, um, involvement in the, the entirety of the, the site of the school was lacking. It was, they, they found their spot up in the, in the top floor of our hall where there was quite a number of people, but I think, um, we probably had a third of the evacuees in the top floor of our hall, and, and other two-thirds were dispersed around the school, and those people, and they were short-staffed, so they really didn't have capacity to be doing too much around the place anyway. They, they really didn't venture out of there.
So, yeah, I've got a question, which is really, um, after all of this, how are your staff and how are your students and their families?
Look, our, our families, I suppose, would, I, I understand that our, our community was very much less impacted than those in, directly in the, the, in the firing line at Lismore, and, and we are acutely aware that many, many people, that many other people had been more seriously impacted than we have. That doesn't diminish the impact that it's had on a number of our staff, so there's probably three or four who are living in Mullumbimby and, and Broadwater and stuff, who, who lost personal, you know, belongings, houses, all of that sort of stuff, and students as well. You know, we draw from, from Evans Head and from, um, uh, Woodburn and, and, and Mullumbimby as well. So we had quite a number of students who were impacted. Some of, of them are still recovering, but of course, we didn't lose the entire school. We didn't, we, we count ourselves lucky in that respect.
And, sorry, just a follow-up on your staff. I mean, given the fact that your staff had to step up and do personal care and just, it just sounds like an incredible, quite, um, very challenging story. I mean, are they, are they able to access other support in terms of, you know, debriefing from all of that? I, I mean, I know that, I'm sure the school's trying to do that, but in terms of mental health support and those kind of things, are you finding that you've got access to that?
We have, yes, yes. So they turned up for Mon-, for Monday morning, ready to start teaching again, so they'll be back on the job. So it was, it was a Herculean effort on Friday afternoon with, with our onsite cleaners and our, and our kids getting in and, you know, sanitizing and cleaning every piece of equipment in the school. So there were, you know, we had two, two onsite cleaners, and they, they marshaled the entire school to get that place cleaned up, ready to go. Now, there was some deep hygiene cleaning that needed to happen, you know, we had lots of classrooms that had, you know, feces and, and all sorts of stuff, dog droppings and, and whatever else that, um, that we're still making claims for, but in terms of, um, the school being able to be operational and open by Monday morning, we were. And, and I, I can only give credit to my entire staff and the school community for that. It was just outstanding.
Catherine has a question.
Yeah, Catherine, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. My name's Catherine Kuzak. I came to visit you at the school and.
They were the new that I referred to before.
Well, I requested you as a witness because I consider what you and your school did is just heroic. Um, and I feel like your experiences have a lot of lessons for government in the future. I wasn't the person who, I wasn't aware of the premier's interaction, so that must have been somebody else, but because I visited you while they were there. But I just wanted to, just a couple of things, if you don't mind. There were, as I understood it, there were seven hundred and fifty evacuees, including Ballina Hospital in the high school, and then across the road, another two hundred and fifty.
What's across the road?
Holy Family Promise.
Holy Family.
Okay.
So it's one thousand evacuees, and that didn't count the nurses and doctors and all the people. Um, the communications went down that morning, that same morning that Ballina Hospital came in, and there was no information to you, correct, as to what was going on, and that caused the school's internal communications to fail as well. So you were suddenly the person that everybody looked to because nobody could find the person from the government, who we later found in Holy Family.
Okay.
So you were the only person on the site, uh, and everybody was looking to you, and you had no information, as I understand it. There was no instructions, there was no. So even, uh, you were wondering, when I arrived, um, I've got all these gates open, the sun is setting, um, I need to secure the school, but you didn't know what the procedures were in relation to the center. I just wondered if you could talk about, I, I, and all of your staff, they were so calm, and they were continuing to try and deal with every inquiry that came in because nobody could report where they were. Families didn't know, everyone was. I just wonder if you could talk about that? And what could have been done better?
We were, we were really operating on a clean slate, you know, and, and my, my comment that we felt the attitude of, of those who should have been in charge was, well, they're a school and they know how to do things. It actually played out to be somewhat true because we do know how to do things. We, we know how to organize large groups. We know how to, um, you know, get groups of people fed in an orderly way. We take kids away on camps and excursions and those sorts of things. Um, you know, our office staff were wonderful in getting, um, people registered and chasing them up throughout the day. Otherwise, I don't think that would have happened. So, yes, we, we called upon a lot of our, our own experiences as educators and, and carers, and I think that word was key in the process, too, because pastoral care is a, uh, is a, is a key to what we're about as, as a Catholic school, too, and we, we like to think that, um, you know, we're not just about procedures and about, you know, delivering education, that our, our, our modus operandi as, as teachers within that system of schools is to care for people. And I suppose that just kicked in as a, as a matter of course, and, and the, the innate nature of, of our staff to, um, give their time and keep giving and, and not to count the cost and not to wait for instruction was, was just wonderful. And that, that's, that's where I alluded to that article that was in The Australian that, um, that spoke of the work that was done by our senior students in helping set up the hospital. And the wording in that article that, that disappointed me was that they, they did all of this work, um, without any direction. Now, that implies to me that the hospital staff, um, ignored them and, and didn't sort of support them in that process. What they did was trusted in their initiative and allowed them to work unsupervised, knowing that what they were doing was the right thing, and I think it could have been worded much better. So the late person reading that article might have thought, well, you know, the, the hospital people were terrible, and they weren't, they were outstanding. I thought, I couldn't believe that a, a, a fully functioning hospital could be set up in four hours.
I'm not aware it's ever happened before. It's a miracle.
So in terms of setting up beds and rolling out gurneys and bringing, um, trolleys and, and, um, stands to hold up.
IVs.
IVs and all of that sort of stuff. Yes, that, that, um, manual operations, our, our kids did a wonderful job, but it wasn't, wouldn't have been done without the direction of the hospital staff there. And so I have to give them, you know, a huge amount of credit for being so patient and, and, you know, willing to work with young people who were just keen to help.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, thank you for, for presenting today. Um, the, just building on what Catherine was asking, I'm just picturing the, the hundreds of, um, patients in aged care, um, uh, patients that, that you were mentioning in your statement. And surely there were quite a few critical incidents during that time or, or, um, you know, things going wrong within the school in terms of patients' health, in terms of aged care patients. Were there anything, was there anything that happened in terms of critical incidents during that time?
The, um, the, the first evening, the, um, Meg, who was overseeing the operations, had to call the police in because, you know, there were, um, a couple of evacuees on site, called, God bless them, who were drinking, and I, I think there may have been, um, a hash pipe or something, or, or, you know, um, one of those other drugs, I don't know, I can't remember, but, and, and basically get the police to help her go around to, to all of those evacuees, evacuees and say, this is a school site, you can't be doing those things here. And by and large, they were compliant, you know, they understood and are appreciative of the, the support that the school was giving to them, and maybe they did, maybe they didn't, but perhaps they were just more, um, um, circumspect and, and secretive about what they were doing. And if that's the case, and there was no trouble that came from it, you know, you know, who can complain? You know, they're, they're displaced people, they haven't got a home to go to. But beyond that, now in terms of, of, you know, aged care and high, high needs disability care, the disability patients had their own carers. They, they would came along with people from a, a number of the facilities in town, and, and those carers were with them. So once they were settled and in, um, we had little to do with them other than to provide them with meals when they needed it, um, excuse me. Um, it wa-, it was more so, um, those aged care residents who were deemed to be self-care residents that then didn't attract somebody to come along with them because in their own homes, they can care for themselves, but when they're laying on a floor and can't get up, that was the challenge. And my, you know, without question, my staff just took them to the bathrooms and washed them up and cleaned their beds and their linen and those sorts of things and, and supported them and cared for them. But beyond that, in terms of, of critical incidents, um, you know, the hospital, by and large, from what I saw, my interactions with Jenny when I was down there was that it, it operated fairly smoothly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
This is a, a practical consideration. It's a school, like, when you say you cleaned linen, did all of that, do you have facilities, like washing machine, like, was it all?
No, so we, we, we bagged all of those things up and put the call out via our Facebook page for families to come and collect that stuff and wash it out, wash it for us. Which they did happily, you know, and, um, one of, one of the great ironies of the, of the whole situation was that, you know, we were called upon to put our buses into action to, to help the SES, um, move around to various locations and to. and to collect evacuees and displaced people whilst all of Blanchard's buses were parked out the front of our school because they couldn't operate, because schools were pretty much closed down, which created traffic jams out the front of our school. So the Blanchard's buses weren't operating, but ours were put into service in order to help. Now, it may well have been a factor of the size of the buses, that ours was a little bit smaller. You know, we've got a twenty-five seat Rosa and a twelve seat, you know, minibus, which might have been a little bit more agile around the place. And the big school buses that carry sixty students may not have been able to get around the place. I imagine that's probably the reason why, but it was a great irony that they were parked there causing traffic jams out the front of the school. And there's no blame on Blanchard's for any of that. They didn't know that we were going to be in evacuation centre when they parked them. But it was a great irony that, you know, cars couldn't get past and ambulances couldn't get past because the buses were there.
Mr Lewis, once again, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just thinking, going forward, you made this work in very trying circumstances with little to no support. Going forward, is there, do you see an opportunity to make, not just your school, but other schools, I guess, work in these scenarios? If, you know, arrangements are put in place beforehand, you can reclaim costs and that sort of stuff. Are our schools an option for these sort of events?
Look, I think they are. I think there's a whole lot of infrastructure work that needs to be done. You know, we're moving people around the school. You know, we have emergency night lighting. We don't have proper floodlighting for, you know, our travel ways and our passages in order to move people safely. So we were moving, we had to move some people out of Holy Family School onto our site across the road using mobile phone torches to light the way. So, I mean, that is probably one thing that our school needs to look at in terms of more lighting. But bringing those sorts of things, those practical things into play from the outset would be hugely important. And yes, I think schools could play a role. They're big facilities. They're probably one of the most underutilised public assets in any community. They're open from, you know, eight till four each day and closed on weekends and public holiday, school holidays, sorry. So there's lots of opportunities to use them for these sorts of situations. But people would need to be on the ground. There was a lot of goodwill at my school and if that goodwill didn't exist, the place would not have functioned. So there needs to be that sort of coordinated and targeted leadership on site to ensure that it operates effectively.
Can I just, just quick, just ideally though, in relation to that, wouldn't it be preferable for evacuation centres to be established so that classes aren't disrupted in terms of school education, students' education? Would you not agree?
I would agree, yes.
Well, you use the Xavier Catholic School model and fitted all these schools out. Ideally, you would agree, we do need education centres so that schools aren't needed though.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I use the word fortuitous, but it's probably not the right word. But it was fortuitous that for that period of time, we were going to be closed down anyway because of the, you know, our staff couldn't get to work and our kids couldn't get to school. So the impact on that in terms of the learning, that was going to happen anyway.
Can I just comment too, accommodating that number of people, that the classrooms actually broke that up a bit as opposed to some of the big auditoriums, it gives an opportunity anyway. Without going to, they're very, they're very harrowing places, evacuation centres, is all I can say.
And, you know, and we were ideal for the hospital downstairs because we had six separate classrooms with a centre space that was a common area that allowed them to set up wards with doors that closed and separated them from the group and a triage and an emergency department and a specialised care.
Pharmacy.
Yes, a pharmacy as well.
Are we done?
Thank you very much.
Now, members will have to have a tiny deliberative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.